Regular city council meeting Tuesday, December 8th, 2020. This is Mayor Jeff Ellsworth and in accordance with, I have a special paragraph to read regarding remote meetings. In accordance with executive order N dash 29 dash 20 and guidance from the California Department of Public Health on gatherings, remote public participation is allowed. We will address the order in the following ways. Members of the public may not physically attend meetings. The city council meeting will be live streamed on Comcast Channel 28 and on the city's website barring technical difficulties. Those members of the public wishing to participate must do so remotely via Zoom electronic meetings in the following ways. By either logging onto the Zoom link located on the meeting agenda. Please download the app to your computer or mobile device and enter the meeting ID or by calling a listed number and enter the meeting ID. Public comment for city council meetings will be accepted via email to publiccomment@cityofsthelena.org. All public comments must be emailed by 4:00 PM prior to the meeting. Email public comments will not be read out loud, but will be publicly available and attached to the online city council agenda. I was, I skipped checking in with our assistant to the city manager Priya Nixon to let folks know about our Spanish language interpretation. Priya, could you let folks know about the Spanish language interpretation? And also any other issues with public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Ellsworth. So tonight's meeting will have live Spanish interpretation. To access this interpretation, you will need to use Zoom, the Zoom application from either your cell phone, tablet, or computer. And instructions on how to download the Zoom app are listed in English and Spanish on the city's agenda, which is posted on the website. And once you've downloaded the app and you've joined the meeting, you'll see a small globe and that is either going to be at the top or the bottom of your screen. And you can click on that for the live Spanish interpretation. And then for folks who are, who would like to participate during the public comment portion of the meeting, what you will do is you will either use the raise hand feature, which is it's a little hand icon at the top or the bottom of your screen. And then I do see that we have some folks who are joining us by phone. So if you would like to participate by phone for public comment, you, you will dial 669-900-6833. And then you will enter in 899-9024-2284. And then you'll press star nine to raise your hand to speak during the public comment. And that information is also listed on the agenda. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to our pledge of allegiance. I've asked Vice Mayor Doring to lead us in the pledge this evening.
Here I am. I have to get situated. I found a flag. Put your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we'll move now to our roll call.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Here.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Here.
Councilor Coburnstein?
Here.
Chateau?
Here.
Knutson?
Present.
And now we'll move to our public forum. This is where members of the public are entitled to speak on matters of municipal concern, not on the agenda. Each person's comments shall be limited to four minutes. Each person is entitled to speak on any non-agendaized item only once at any meeting. Brief questions by council members for clarifications may be posed and answered, and council members may make requests that items be placed on future agendas. But in accordance with state law, no substantive discussion or action may take place unless and until the matter properly appears on the agenda. Ms. Nixon, is there at this point any public comment in the public forum section?
All right, I'm checking right now to see if there are any raised hands. And I am not seeing any.
Okay, let's give it just a moment here as I move over here. Okay, so with that, if we're not seeing any hands, then I'm going to close the public comment. I'm going to move now to reports by our staff and city council, future agenda items and AB 1234 reports. We'll start with our city attorney, Ethan Walsh.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report tonight.
Thank you. Our city manager, Mark Presswich.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome everyone tonight. I just want to say a word of thanks to our staff. 2020 has been a very challenging year. This is the last official regularly scheduled meeting of the year. And they've worked very hard this year. They've sacrificed this year. And I really appreciate all of their commitment to this community throughout the year. Thanks so much.
Thank you. I certainly echo that. And we'll move to our finance director, Dr. Metz.
Thank you, Mayor Ellsworth and council members. I just want to provide a reminder that we are still getting some comments regarding confusion on water bills within the city. So I'm encouraging if anybody has any questions or need any clarification, feel free to reach out to our water department. As well as if they're not receiving a response, they can call me directly. And my direct line is 707-312-0574. And also I do appreciate those that I have been able to talk to and, and help through what's going on with their account. And then the other thing I do want to report is we had a successful migration of our accounting software services to the cloud. So we took it down for data migration last, late last week. We were up and live running on Monday morning. And so far, besides working through logins with staff members, it seems to be successful. And so we're very excited about that. And what it means in particular for the city is during any power outages or anything like that, we are no longer relying on in-house servers. Everything is cloud-based. So even though we're remote, we can still access all of our financial data.
Thank you. And April, would you remind us of the, the recent award that the finance department received?
Yes, this is the second year we've actually put together a PAFR. So it's a popular annual financial report. And what it does, it takes the information that's in our larger PAFR, consolidates it down to easily understood at a, at a little brochure. So this is the first year we actually applied for the PAFR award. And I do have to give kudos to our finance manager, Mandy Killogg, who is on the meeting tonight. It was her idea to do the PAFR. She put it together. She submitted the award. And on behalf of the City of St. Helena, we did receive that PAFR award. So we are very excited for being the first time that we actually applied for it, that we did receive it.
That's really terrific. So thank you to the finance department for the excellent work. We will move to Ms. Japhopolis, our city clerk.
Nothing to report.
And Public Works Director, Ms. Smithies?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. The only thing I want to report tonight is that the downtown restrooms are open. Hopefully we'll be having some kind of shelter in place celebration for that. But the good news is they are operational and a good time when we'd like hands-free touching at a public restroom. So if you haven't used it, check out the Moneyway Oak Avenue parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you. That's excellent news from the public works department. Really terrific to see that project come to fruition. So thank you. Ms. DeRosa from our planning and building.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. I have nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. I'll move to our, do we have somebody from our police or fire here this evening? I am not seeing somebody here. So I will move to our council members. Council member Knutson.
Nothing to report.
Okay, very good. Councilperson Chateau?
Nothing to report.
Councilperson Coburnstein?
Nothing to report.
And Vice Mayor Doring?
Nothing to report, but I want to remind everyone that it is tradition in Napa County for outgoing city council members to make all motions. So be prepared.
All right, thank you. So I will just mention, you know, we, we are still pushing through the, the COVID situation, meeting quite regularly with the other mayors and supervisors as we, as we, and also city managers working through the next few months. We know the vaccines are working forward. And we as a community are, are, are working together to make sure everybody gets through this, looking for ways to support our local businesses, promoting folks shopping locally, supporting our local restaurants, being safe, certainly being safe and watching the COVID protocols. Try to talk about this as a, as a challenge, sort of like a point in the marathon where people sometimes hit the wall because it's been extending. But if we just keep focused and working together, we'll get through it. So I just want to recognize the work of the community and certainly our staff and council over the last year in, in dealing with this. So thank you, everybody, very much for that. I want to just recognize on Friday with Councilperson Chateau participated and our assistant to the city manager, Priya Nixon, participated in the County Climate Action Committee, looking for disgusting ways of structuring that body and also work to be done in the next year. Last, over the last week, we've had two special meetings. One on racial and social equity and one on an after incident on the glass fire and the recent fire issues. So we've been busy, staff has been busy. And I want to say thank you for the focus in getting these things together for us before the end of the year. And with that, I'm going to then move on to our presentations and public recognitions. And this is our Arbor Day proclamation. And it's presented to Carlos Uribe, our, from our Public Works Department. And I'm going to, is Carlos here with us?
I am here, Mayor.
I'm seeing you there. Thank you for being here and thank you for all your efforts and your work.
Thank you. Thank you.
This is a City of St. Helena proclamation on Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the City of St. Helena has been founded, I'm sorry, whereas the City of St. Helena has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for 22 years and desires to continue its tree planting practices. Now here, therefore, let it be known that the City of St. Helena will be, has declared the 10th day of December 2020 as Arbor Day. And we'll be holding tree plantings in recognition of Arbor Day for the purpose of expressing our support for efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Signed by myself, Mayor Jeff Ellsworth, on this, on this eighth day of December 2020. Thank you. Mr. Uribe, do you have a few comments for us?
Thank you. Sure do. Again, I actually really look forward to this day every, every time we get to, it's usually November, December based on weather. Again, this year because of COVID and trying to maintain social distancing, we will be having a formal event, but we will be planting 11 trees at Baldwin Park. So when you take a stroll through that park, if you come in through the Voorhees side, you will be able to see those. So again, thank you for the recognition.
Very good. Well, thank you very much. And now we'll move on to our staff briefing. This is our city manager with a COVID-19 update.
Thank you, Mayor. California continues to experience a surge in COVID cases as well as hospitalizations. And that prompted the governor on December 3rd to issue what he said, what he called a regional stay-at-home order. This is an order that was also modified slightly and clarified on December 6th. Locally in Napa County, today it was announced that there were 83 new cases. There were no new cases in St. Helena. So some silver lining there. In terms of hospitalizations, there are 18 locally in, in Napa County. That's an increase of four over yesterday. There are 12 ICU beds available. The regional stay-at-home order is intended to encourage Californians to stay at home and not mix with other households. And the, the state has been carved into five different regions, which you've probably seen on the news. From north to south, that's, these are Northern California, they call it NorCal, the greater Sacramento area, the Bay Area, San Joaquin Valley, and all of Southern California. Two of these regions find themselves under that order today. And it relates to ICU capacity in hospitals. So statewide, the ICU capacity is approximately 13%. If any county, any region, I'm sorry, any one of these five regions, if the hospital capacity drops below 15%, and that's intended to preserve space for other important medical conditions and needs in, in ICUs, then the entire region is subject to the regional stay-at-home order. The regional stay-at-home order does affect retail. It introduces modifications to retail hotels and restaurants. Retail does allow indoor operation, but at 20% capacity and standalone grocery stores at 35% capacity. Hotels have limitations related to guests that are booking travel from out of state. So what that would mean for a guest coming from out of state would mean that they would need to self-quarantine in the hotel room, in the lodging facility for 14 days. So no bookings less than 14 days. And with respect to restaurants, regions subject to this order are only allowed to provide takeout or delivery services for food. Today, about 70% of California residents are under, under the stay-at-home order. There are two regions affected. The San Joaquin region, which has a ICU capacity of only 5.6% now, and Southern California, which has an ICU capacity of 10.1%. In Northern California, our numbers are faring a little better. The Sacramento region has a capacity of 18.8%. The Bay Area in general, which the City of St. Helena is included in with Napa County, is at 24.5%. And NorCal, the north of us, is at 25%. These numbers are updated daily on the state's website. That website is covid19.ca.gov. They have a tremendous amount of resources available and they do a nice job of keeping information up to date. The county also has a very nice website that provides COVID resources that are also available for our community to, to follow. Locally, in contrast with the statewide metrics, our positivity rate is at 6%. Statewide positivity average is 8.4%. The ICU capacity in Napa County is 56% statewide. I mentioned that's approximately 13%. And when we adjust the numbers for new cases per 100,000, our figure is at 20.7. The statewide average is 34. I'll stop there and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
I'm seeing Ms. Chateau with a hand.
I do. What about, what about the impact of St. Helena Hospital opening back up? Would that increase our number of ICU beds available?
It does. And that's, and that's helpful and it's great news. And we shared that news today. The numbers I'm quoting are off of the state website. And so there is a possibility that some of the numbers on the website there may be slightly different than the current numbers locally. But knowing that our numbers are at 56% on the statewide website, which is a, should be updated daily, is a good indication that locally we're in better shape. But we are tied into the greater Bay Area. So we, we rise and fall with our peers in the entire Bay Area. There is a forecast that if, if numbers were continuing on a trend that was looked at about a week ago, that there would be a day where the, where each of the regions before the end of the year slips into the shelter-at-home order. We'll hope that that doesn't happen. We'll continue to monitor the numbers and we'll share with all of our communication mediums any changes in the status.
Thank you.
Any other council questions or comments? Okay, thank you. And yes, just, just wanted to keep encouraging folks for following that protocol and avoiding gatherings. And if we can keep under the curve and keep the hospital capacity and keep it manageable for our frontline workers, that gives us the best chance as we push, push forward through this. So very good. So thank you. And now we'll move to our consent items. My understanding is there is a, a resource online or on the phone if we need on 8.2, if anybody has a question on, on that. But I'll just go through the consent items, starting with 8.1, 8.2, 8.3, 8.4, 8.5, 8.6, 8.7, 8.8, 8.9. And I'm, I'm wondering if my page cut off. Is 8.9 the final?
There is 8.10.
Okay, oh, 8.10. I must have a missing, oh, here we go. 8.10. So I'm seeing.
And also an 8.11.
8.11. Okay, I'm sorry. I had a little printing problem here. Okay, and 8.11. So seeing, seeing no, seeing no hands, I will call for a motion for, for the consent calendar. And that would be one of our outgoing.
I move approval of the consent. Mary Coburnstein.
Yeah, I got to follow Paul's orders here. I'll move the consent agenda.
In a second?
Yes, I will second it.
Okay, very good.
Okay. Councilmember Coburnstein?
Yes.
Chateau? Yeah. Knutson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Okay, so I'm going to move. Sorry about that. I'm just having a little problem with this agenda organizer. Getting back on the online version here. Just give me a moment. So we'll now move to our public hearings. And this is item 9.1. This is discussion of and direction.
Mr. Mayor? Excuse me, Mr. Mayor? We are going to be moving to new business. We're going to, we're going to hear the first three items first.
Okay, so, okay, so we're going to go to item 11 and new business and the recognition of outgoing council members first here.
Correct.
Very good. Okay. Well, very good. We're at item 11.1. This is recognition of outgoing council member David Knutson and Mary Coburnstein. And I'm seeing a recess to be held and that would be after, after this item. So what I'd like to do is take a moment. I know that we have some packages that were sent to, to you. And I would like to take a moment to say thank you and have our council also thank you. Let me just bring this up if I can. Mr. Vice Mayor, are you, do you have the, the staff report there? I'm sorry, could you just jump in for a moment and, and carry this while I'm having a little computer trouble here?
I'm not entirely sure what else there is to say other than we're going to recognize the outgoing city council members. So if you have comments or you want to open the floor up for comments, that's fine.
Yes, okay, very, very good. So that's, I would like to start. And just first, I just want to start by thanking Councilmember Coburnstein, Mary, for really incredible service over these last four years. What you brought to our town has, oh, Cindy is, is asking if you would open your boxes. Now is a good time to open your boxes.
There's nothing in it. Just kidding.
Are you going to read those, Cindy?
Just kidding. Wow, this is quite.
Can you read what the inscriptions are? Or, or Mary, would you read your inscription?
Yeah, it's, I'll show you this. It says, I have to get it where it's dark background. Presented to Mary Coburnstein in recognition of your distinguished and outstanding service to the City of St. Helena Planning Commission, 2015 to 16, City Council Member 2016 to 2020. Thank you. I'll show you. It stands up.
So, and David, do you have yours open? So I wanted to say to Mary, thank you so much for being part of this community and the work you've done over the last few, four years has just been incredible. And before that, on the planning commission, what you brought to our town in terms of, I would say, a more objective approach to governance, the work you've done in helping bring our zoning codes up to date. Your work on the shape committee identifying assets was remarkable. Our work in, in our, working in our legal review and city attorney issues was, was tremendous. The, the appreciations for our employees at, at Lyman Park, the gratitude wall, your work with the COVID recovery, the downtown business loans, your help in bringing forward the tertiary water and purple pipes discussion, your work on the water rates in 2020 and 2016 in looking at how we can bring more equity to our water rates. What you, what you brought to the city is tremendous and I, deep appreciation as I, I'm sure so many in the community do. So I just wanted to express that. And I also, so I wanted to put it out to the, the council if, if there are any other thoughts as well.
I'll go. Well, Mary, you and I have worked on a lot of different projects. And over the course of those many years, we've become what I think are close friends. We're, the friendship that I have with you is, is something that I will cherish forever. I wrote down a bunch of words that came to my mind just to summarize. The mayor mentioned a lot of the projects that we worked on. But I came up with a, you know, a bunch of different words that came to my mind and I, I wrote down competent, professional, focused, committed, dedicated, loyal, and selfless. I've really thoroughly enjoyed working with you for all those reasons. But ultimately, I, when I come down to it, what I'm here, what I do in my life is all about relationships. And I have particularly enjoyed working with you. You've brought so much to our city, much of it behind the scenes. It's just a lot of focus and dedication and brain power that I, I appreciate, will appreciate forever. So thank you very much for your contributions to the city. I can't wait to have that next Coca-Cola after a meeting with you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I'm seeing a hand from Ms. Chateau.
Yeah, I would like to say something, but my audio cut off. So are we just doing Councilmember Coburnstein or also Councilmember Knutson? Just Coburnstein right now?
We're starting with Councilmember Coburnstein and then, then we'll do Mr. Knutson.
Okay, I would love to say something because I have really enjoyed working with you, Councilmember Coburnstein. It has been a privilege. I just find you so smart and wonderful and I know the true you now. And with politics, that's not always easy when you start. And everything that we do and say is in this public format. And it takes time to get to know each other more than I even expected because of the public part of it. And the more I got to know you, the more I just think that you're absolutely fantastic. And the more I got to know you, the more I just think that you're absolutely fantastic, and I have cried over you not being on council anymore. I will miss you. I have really appreciated all that you've given for St. Helena. The gratitude wall was such a huge example of that. When it was challenging, and I expressed that to you, you just said, oh, I can help, I can do this, and you made it easy. And so I will miss you, and I thank all of the hours and all of yourself that you've given this position. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Knudsen?
Yeah, so I wanna also add my thanks to Ms. Coburnstein. You're a force. You came into this town, you didn't know anybody, and guess what? You know everybody now, and you're highly respected. You, when you focus on a goal, you get to that goal. And, you know, I actually can't remember where you got your legal training, but boy, when you were working, I bet, I bet things got, things happened and, and you got to the end line. So I really appreciate your service to the town and the community that you've created and your relationships with, with all of us and with community members and really trying to advance the best interests of the town. So thank you.
Thank you. Mary, do you have any thoughts at this point?
Sure. You know me, I always have something to say. Actually, I got my legal training in the windy city, David. Chicago. You know, it's been a real privilege to be on the city council. I, I really thank the residents or citizens of St. Helena for putting me here in the first place, four years ago. I really enjoyed working closely with our, my fellow council members and our staff. Paul alluded to this a little bit, but you know, shortly after Mark arrived, we developed this really substantial set of goals for the city and a really ambitious work plan. And part of the way to get through it was to have council members work two by two with Mark and the staff and consultants and committees and steering committees to talk about issues and to bring options to the council. And these were in the days when we could actually sit around the table in Mark's office and, you know, many a morning, Paul and I were there having coffee with Mark. I thought, I thought it was, I still think it is, a really excellent way to work. And it's still happening during COVID and Zoom. It's not quite the same. But I hope that in twenty twenty one, maybe things will get more back to normal and you'll have some of these opportunities to work together personally. I did, I was in the trenches with Paul a lot over four years, starting, I think, with the shape committee. And then more recently with Anna on the City Hall and library options, which was a really good thing because she came, you know, right out of the shade committee and as vice chair and had a lot of background and a lot to offer there. And then David and I got thrown in the hopper this summer with the staff to work on the Farmstead Development Agreement. I do think some people don't realize how much work goes on behind the scenes, and that was really intense and very compressed negotiation and, you know, I, I enjoyed it. I thought it was a great team effort, which is what most of those things are. So you know, I do hope that you can continue to work that way. I know that the new council members are gonna have lots of ideas and energy, which is great. And most of all, I hope that when next year rolls around, things are more normal and that, then Paul, I will meet you for a Coca-Cola after a council meeting. So thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mary, and thank you very much for all you've given to this, this city. It's been remarkable. So now we will move to David Knudsen, Councilmember Knudsen. And we want to thank you for your efforts and your service to the community. When I first was getting to know you, understanding your, your background and, and being able to look at both finance and IT issues, I thought it was just a remarkable double plus. And then, as I got to know you more, really realizing your listening skills, your advocacy for the community, your advocacy for youth in our community was, was benefits upon benefits. So you've been a remarkable member here. And what you brought in terms of looking at also at open space and trails and how we as a community continue to work together. What you brought was also great, great value. And so want to say thank you for, for the time that you put in, the efforts. And, and we'll be, as, as with Mary, hoping that you're staying engaged in our community and, and participating as things go forward. Are there any other thoughts, sentiments in, in recognition with Mr., towards Mr. Knudsen? I'm seeing a hand from our Vice Mayor, Paul Doring.
David, thank you so much for your service to our community. A couple of things that I, I take away in the short time we've got to know each other. First of all, I, I've enjoyed getting to know you and becoming your friend. Hopefully, that friendship will continue in as laypeople when we run into each other. But the, the thing that most impresses me about you, in addition to just a brilliant mind, is, is the passion that you have for the natural and physical environment, particularly in St. Helena. And often just for the regular guy, the regular resident in St. St. Helena, that came across and has come across. That passion is infectious. I, I hope that you'll continue in whatever capacity that you have to kind of continue to push us in the direction of, of improving our environment for our citizens, especially just the, you know, the, the, the regular person and, and being an advocate for a full spectrum society. Those things came across very clearly to me, and I, I appreciate the fact that you, you were laser focused on those throughout your tenure. So thank you so much for that. There's a lot of work to be done in those areas. Best of luck, but stay involved because you, you, you have much to offer our community and, and so I thank you so much for your service to our community.
Any other thoughts from our council? I'm seeing, Mary?
Yeah, I first, when I think of David, I first think of him immediately as he was appointed to the planning commission. And the first case he had was one of the biggest ones. It was the CIA, and it was two meetings. And what a way to jump in and have to learn a lot and participate in, in a meaningful way and talk about a trial by fire. That was it. And I think it helped prepare you for service on the council. I, I heard tonight from April about something going into the cloud, which I'm sure makes you very happy because you've constantly been pushing us in that direction, and maybe you'll be a consultant to get everything operating that way. And lastly, I want to echo what people have said about your interest in the environment and walking and the biking trails, particularly this last year with COVID, where everybody is out walking and biking and in order to keep their sanity and just get a little exercise. And I do, it does make me think of this connected pedestrian trail idea, which I think is a great one. And I hope it does come to fruition. Thanks.
I'm seeing Ms. Chateau.
Yes, I'll piggyback on that because first I got the same thing when the cloud came up today. There's been so many meetings where you have pushed us towards more technical changes that can make us better. And I really appreciated that about you. I, it's been fun to work with you. I just, when I think of you, I think you riding down the street, usually on Adams Street. And I don't know how you do it, but you still pick up the phone whenever I call with so much enthusiasm. And I was so pleased to learn that your father was a minister because it made sense to me, your righteous passion for economic justice in our community before other people were even talking about it. When I think back over the theme that was always there, and it's come out even more strongly recently. I just really appreciate that from you. And of course, the open space and the walking and the trails and with all of our park and rec activities in town, you live it, it's your life, it's what you do every day. So you would be willing to go over and beyond the normal that other people would give to it. So thank you, and I'll miss you. And I'm around.
Thank you. And I, I want to echo what Paul said about the support of a multifaceted community, full spectrum community, recognizing your efforts in that as well, and let you know that many, many people have expressed that they'll miss you and, and how important it's been that you, you've been here. So I want to say thank, thank you. Do you have any comments at the moment?
I actually do have a comment. I mean, first off, it's really embarrassing, but very nice to hear such kind comments from my fellow council members. I've really, I've really enjoyed my time on planning and council, and you guys are, you and the staff are huge, a huge reason for that. You know, if you don't like the people, if you're not having fun with the people you work with, it's, it's really a challenge. I actually thought about what I was gonna say tonight because I, and it's funny, some of you guys have sort of pre, previewed my theme. So it's pretty quick. But I did write it down, so I'm just gonna walk you through it. So I had a lot of fun. I really enjoyed representing the people of our lovely, lovely rural town. It's a great town. And I think maybe it's, is it due to my finance and consulting background or the fact that I'm a software developer and I'm entrepreneurial? You guys will see me next year. We're launching, I'm launching my startup that now have, we have eleven people on board. When I first joined planning, it wasn't even an idea in my brain, so it's, it's on its way. But I liked it. The, the reason why I'm talking about that is I really like to think about problems systematically and to help generate options. And, you know, here in St. Helena, given the problems and given the possible options we have, clearly, I was a, really a kid in a candy store. And so I want to thank you all really for giving me the opportunity, each and every one of you. I, I really appreciate it and have enjoyed it. And I would like to thank city staff also who are unbelievably supportive. You guys are great, and, and I'm really impressed with your professionalism and your desire to do the right thing for our town. I also want to thank of all people Tracy Sweeney. She's the one who I called four years ago to talk about the planning commission. She started me on this path to join the planning commission. And in fact, she said, no, don't worry, David. I said, I'm not sure I have time. She said, don't worry, it won't take very much time. Tracy, you lied actually, because it does take a fair amount of time. And then finally, I want to also thank the residents of this town who participate in our government because this is your town, this is your government, we represent you. And also just sort of, you know, whoever pays your bills is your boss, and by far, most of the tax dollars that support the town government come from the residents of this town, from your property taxes, from the shopping that you do, from the lumberyard, from the building materials. You are the engine of this town. So these are your decisions. And thank you for paying attention and letting us serve you. And finally, I, I didn't just do this because it's fun and interesting. I mean, that's a great reason to do it, but I also did it because in a certain way, I'm really called to serve. And as Anna said, my dad was a minister. What she doesn't know is my grandfather was a minister. And I have ministers in my family from hundreds of years ago in Sweden where they actually keep the records. It's so crazy. Now, I'm not personally a religious person, but clearly I'm called. And I, I want to talk about my dad for a second. When I was growing up, we were always looking after the, the poor, the indigent, runaways. We gave what I thought was going to be my high school car to one of the Vietnamese immigrant families that our church sponsored. And my dad used to rescue hippie girls in the mountains to, before he would ship them back home to their parents, they'd have a way station in our home. But I have to say that the, the most, and I'm gonna gut this out. The most positive memory I have of my father was how he would take the church van and scoop up older folks, the infirm, the shut at homes, those with disabilities, those without funds. He gathered them all up, all these people, and he'd take them to my sister's hut, to the high school gym to see my sister play basketball on the varsity basketball team. And so he created community among folks that couldn't create community themselves. And I think that's just a ginormous thing. And I think that's actually what all of our calling is, to create community. My dad was an amazing man, and he was also a big bike enthusiast. And he died almost twenty eight years ago at age fifty nine, which is my age of cancer. So I would like to dedicate my years of service, my four years of service to this town, to the memory of my father, Don Knudsen. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Thank you. Well, we have deep appreciation for you and Mary and the work you've put in, the time you've put in. The city will remember it. It, you've done a lot, and hopefully we'll keep doing a lot, and we'll, we'll all keep being part of this community together and working forward. So thank you very, very much. And we will, we'll now take a little break. We'll do, what, do we think a ten minute break, or do we want to do something quicker for the turnaround? Mr. Press Switch Five, I'm looking at Cindy. We'll do a five minute break, and then we'll come back and we'll seat the new council members. And once again, thank you, Mary and Dave, for, for all you've, you've done.
I have a question.
Oh, yes.
Procedurally, are we going to keep going with the after, is the agenda going back? Because there's some people that are making comments on the, and they want to know the timing on the bike.
We're gonna do the, we're gonna bring in the new council members, do the nomination for the Vice Mayor, and then go back to the earlier items. So I would say in twenty minutes or so?
So, so the biking one, which would come right after the Vice Mayor, is now gonna still be way later in the evening. We're going back up again?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna look to Cindy to give me some direction there on, on the timing.
We're gonna go back to that item after we choose the Vice Mayor. So which item? Are we going all the way back up to the top? I, hold on one sec. So we're gonna, we're gonna hear items eleven point two, eleven point three, and then we're gonna go back to nine point one.
However, Mayor, you have a, you have an opportunity to continue with eleven point four if, if you see people in the audience and you think that would, from a timing standpoint, would be better to have early.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so yeah, so we can just go eleven point one, eleven point two, eleven point three, eleven point four. And we like that idea, I think, because we think there's gonna be some parents on the, on the call looking at the schools. Then we'll, we'll just move up and then take nine point one and ten point one after eleven point four. Is that the thought? Okay, let's do it that way. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hi Lester, can we test your audio?
Sure, how does it sound?
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Eric, I'm wondering if we could also test your audio and video. Council member-elect Hardy, or council member Hardy, tonight, we really like your bow tie.
Thank you. There are many more yet to come.
Fantastic.
I was trying to figure out earlier today if I can organize them according to, you know, mood, subject matter on the agenda, time of year. There's, there's a lot to take into account, but I've yet to work it all out.
And Mr. Hall, if we can test your audio as well, that would be great. There should be a but, there you go.
Can you hear me now?
I can, thank you, perfect, thank you so much. Wonderful.
Okay, we're moving back in, I'm seeing everybody coming on. Seeing Mr. Hall, I'm seeing Mr. Hardy. Priya, can you hear me at this point?
Yes, I can.
Very good. And let's see, I have, we see Mr. Doring, Mr. Chateau, so it looks like we're getting everybody back on. Hey Eric, hey Lester, welcome aboard.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Okay, so Cindy, are we at five minutes, are we ready to get rolling?
I'm ready.
Okay, very good, let me just scroll down here, trying to get my computer issue straightened out. Okay.
11.2 is my item.
Okay, so we're at 11.2. And this is our oath of office administered by City Clerk Cindy Schapopoulos to Mayor Jeff Ellsworth and Council Members Eric Hall and Lester Hardy. I'd like to say welcome to Eric and Lester to, to the city council. And so with that, I will hand it to Cindy and let her begin the process.
Let's start with the mayor. And if you would, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jeff Ellsworth.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will.
That I will.
Bear true faith and allegiance.
Bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take, that I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, next, Mr. Hall, if you'd please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Eric Hall.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hardy, if you'd please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Lester Hardy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard, Mr. Hardy and Mr. Hall. We're gonna move into some items, get started right away. And then we have a, a break over the holidays and we'll be coming back in January. And at that point, and over the holidays, looking towards how we can work on our goals and governance meetings, as well as our, you know, initial city council meetings, but also some working, some sessions, helping us all work together. And so I'm excited to have you aboard and I, I know everybody is. And we'll, we'll get started right away and get into a rhythm and, and get some good work done together. So looking forward to the future. And looking forward, we, as, as you know, I think you're all familiar, we have a remarkable staff. And as Mary pointed out, and as Paul has pointed out, it's incredible asset. We have a staff that we feel is really committed to our, our community and our town. And so this working relationship with council that's committed, with staff that's committed, and a community that's committed. I, I, I know good things will come. So thank you very much for, for being here and being ready to, to get rolling. So we'll jump right in. And so our next step is nomination on a vice mayor, by the mayor. And I am going to put forward as my nomination, Paul Doring, who has been serving as the vice mayor for the last few years. And there are many, many reasons why I believe he's a great choice for this. He's an excellent collaborator, he's an excellent listener, he's an excellent wearer of factors. I believe he, he brings a, a goal of working towards a full spectrum community. His ability to adapt to many different issues and see methods of quantification that are important, sometimes in areas where it, it's difficult. His ability to work collaboratively, collaboratively and work with others, I think is very important. There's a lot of reasons, those are some of them. So I would like to put forth my nomination of Paul Doring for our vice mayor. And I would like to put that up to the, to the council to see if we have support for Mr. Doring. Can I talk you out of it? I'm not going to give you that opportunity, I'm just going to move to the
Oh, I'm muted, no.
Cindy, did you have a comment in terms of process?
I was just asking if you were making, I was just wondering if you were making a motion in that, with that effect.
Yes, and I would, I would make the motion for Mr. Doring to be
Toyota Highlander?
Continue his, serving as vice mayor.
Oh, no.
And I would be looking for a second on that motion.
I will second the motion.
And a roll call, please.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, who, who made the second?
Mr. Hardy.
Mayor Eldred.
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Chateau?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring.
Yes, and thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so with that, we're going to move on now to the 11, item 11.4. And this is consideration of a crosswalk study on Spring Street and Madrona Avenue of a citywide active transportation and safe routes to school plan. And this is prepared by Ms. Smithies. And we are looking for a recommendation to provide direction to the city manager. Ms. Smithies, do you want to take us into this a little bit?
Actually, there was a revised recommended action is to, to, there's, there's an attached resolution for this item, but let me start from the beginning. On, on October 27th, we received public comment. This also goes back that we had public comment after the bike and walk and roll to school that occurred last September of 2019. But I've been following up again this year to, to do some, a corridor, provide crosswalk improvements along Spring Street and Madrona Avenue. So after that meeting, I went out to just a couple of consultants that we're aware of that are on our, our short call list, as well as a recent one that did work on Spring Street, W Trans. And then just to see who has time to submit in a proposal to do a corridor study for these two, two streets, as well as a, a citywide safer routes to school focused plan, similar to what the city of Calistoga has. And also trying to focus in on our city since we're knocking out some of the other long planned projects through the Napdell Transportation Bike Plan and the Pedestrian Plan. And we received a comment back at the, before Thanksgiving, or, or first proposal from the H D to provide both components, a recommendation for, for the, a proposal for the, just the, the two street corridors as well as the citywide. And then we received one from Inner West for just the two corridors and then one from W Trans for both studies. And we're bringing this to you tonight. We had quite a, for, for discussion and feedback to staff and/or direction to move forward. And allotting $10,000 towards moving forward at least the Inner West proposal at this time and potentially moving forward with a more citywide robust plan that will focus in on these areas on both sides of the city that need corridor improvements to, to ensure safer pedestrian travels for our school travel students and/or our other pedestrians. Because it's a very walkable community and making those improvements as we can, since we have been successful with our plans with getting additional grant funding, like the recent crosswalks on Elmhurst and the, on Main Street at Elmhurst and Pratt Avenue, on the downtown sidewalk project, and recently the College Avenue and Pope Street Crossing. These have been long identified as needed improvements for the city. They have been highlighted for accidents and priority needs to make improvements. But there are also these other areas where our citizens have concerns. And we're bringing this to you tonight to make a decision or discussion. And I'll leave it at that, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, so just for clarification, so we're looking at a couple different aspects of this. What I'm seeing on the updated recommendation is for a resolution regarding the, the not to exceed $10,000 from the gas tax. And then also we'll be considering the safe routes to school, the different aspects of that.
Correct, and that's something that, you know, could be programmed and maybe the next fiscal year potentially. But, um, but at least try to provide immediate relief to the concerns of our residents.
Very good, thank you. So with that, I'll bring it, oh, I'm going to start out the council here and I'm seeing a hand from Ms. Chateau.
I do, I have a clarifying question, because I'm very interested in moving forward with the Madrona and Spring Street improvements, just because I've heard so much from so many parents directly about this. But I'm curious, if we do the safe routes to school, the bigger thing, does that stop or slow down moving forward with Madrona and Spring Street? Or can we also move forward with Madrona and Spring Street and, and say yes to the bigger safe route to school as well? And not have an impact, the first project?
The, the citywide would address the Madrona and Spring Street, it would include all that quarter and the others. That's why it seems kind of, not, not for, you know, it seems like maybe more prudent to do the bigger scope. But financially, I'm not sure if we dealt whether we could do both at the same time right now. That would be a question for our Director of Finance, April Mitz. But certainly the 10,000 we thought was, ability to do that would be okay.
My question is more on timing. Would we be able to move faster if we just do the first two streets and wait, then saying yes to the bigger? And that would then slow down these other streets?
Don't think it would slow down either, because it's going to be two different consultants. Because the one consultant only does, only has the ability, the resources to do the, the two streets and not the robust citywide plan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments at this point from the council? And then I'll open it up to the public. And there may need to be a little more clarification here as we go in terms of what we're looking at. Any other thoughts from the council at this point? I'm seeing Mr. Hardy.
Yes, I, I do have a couple of questions for staff. And, and first of all, I wanted to, I'm wondering, Ms. Smithies, if you can explain to us what the purpose of the study would be? I, I noticed more than one public comment that really called into question why we can't apply something more like a common sense standard and, and go out and paint the crosswalks.
You don't just put in a crosswalk, just because you put in a crosswalk doesn't stop anyone from getting hit. You need to evaluate on your proximity to other intersections, driveways, line of sight. Some of these situations where there have been recommended crosswalks, it's an atypical location where you have a dead end street into a parallel, perpendicular street and not a true intersection. So you have a problem there with people making left-hand turns, potentially not seeing the person in the crosswalk. We have the situation at Hunt Avenue and Main Street where there was a cross, there was a pedestrian crossing on the north side of Main Street and Cal Transit determined that wasn't safe and they relocated to the south side of the Main Street. There are people that, you know, just, you can't just put a crosswalk, Spring Street's problematic. Spring Street's problematic. You have two streets intersecting on one side, you know, I believe it's Hudson and Allen. And, and then you have the other intersection. It needs to be looked at, instead of just painting a crosswalk. And I believe in some of the public comments, I think they're inferring some of the, I mean, this is just me assuming that maybe the expectation is a lighted crosswalk or a sign crosswalk, similar to what we have on Grayson for crossing over to the high school. A more improved intersection crossing, so students feel safer or residents feel safer as they are crossing the street, they activate the lighted crosswalk, be it just the signs overhead, and then they cross over the, the, the main corridors to ensure improved line of sight distance to the oncoming vehicle traffic. Hope that answers your question. Someone with a comment made that someone ran a stop sign. We can't enforce, we can't stop people from not following enforcement. And, and while you're supposed to stop well in advance of a crosswalk, people still ignore people waiting to cross the street or in the crosswalk. And which is ongoing enforcement and education.
Thank you. I, I walk pretty much everywhere. And I have become increasingly cognizant of the danger pedestrians face at some of our intersections. So it is a subject of real concern to me. And then one follow-up question for the city attorney. Mr. Walsh, am I right in thinking that taking the engineering, the, the design analysis part of this first and getting it professionally done is in part a way of reducing the city's exposure to liabilities in the event of an accident?
Yes, I would say that's part of it. I, I'd say, you know, first and foremost, the most fundamental reason for doing the engineering study is to ensure that we have the crosswalks in a safe place and that we have an expert look and, and make sure that they are appropriately placed. But, but part of that does address potential risks to the city. If we were to put a crosswalk in a place without doing that study and then found it to be unsafe, then we would have, you know, potential exposure to liability as a result of that.
Understood. So, but I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, it's possible the engineers may not reach a different conclusion from experienced staff members. But I think I'm, I'm I'm assuming that having an expert opinion in the record really does. Well, it's, it's prudential is the way I'm looking at it. A, a matter of being prudent with the public purse.
Yes, I would, I would agree with that.
Thank you very much. That's all my questions.
Are there any other questions from council at this point? I've got a, a question, a couple of comments. So my expectation, I guess, would be that something like this, this studies would look at the potential for lighted or enhanced crossings with extra protective measures than just a painted crosswalk. There'd be something more substantial suggested by these, these studies?
It could and it could not. You may have a finding from a consultant that says you don't need any crosswalks. We actually had the W Trans consultant that did the bike lanes on the Spring Street project say you don't necessarily need crosswalks on, on, on some of these streets with lower traffic. However, if you're creating a safe route to school plan and you're trying to enforce a, a safe route, you might want to increase the level of protection by adding the lighted crosswalk signs.
So that larger project, that's, that's the more comprehensive safe routes to schools might help bring in the idea of enhanced crosswalks. I share Ms. Chateau's concern a little bit that a larger project may, may take longer to implement. And if we are looking for some immediate solutions, looking at these two crossings, there may be a, a value of looking at the smaller project separately and, and to see if we can get something done first. But I, I do think if the, the idea of enhanced crossings, I believe that's what our community is, is looking for, is that extra safety that a parent can feel comfortable that their children are taking the route, whether biking or walking. And there's enough extra notification to the driver that, that there are very vulnerable people in the, in the street. So in terms of clarification on those two, it may take a little bit more discussion. But I, I feel like opening it up to public, unless Erica, there's a comment there.
We could wait for public comment. I think we have a particular Bicycle Coalition has, has some good information to provide to the council this evening. So I think we should wait for public comment. And if you have follow-up questions, then we'll go there.
Okay, that sounds good. So I'm going to do that. I'm going to open it up now for public comment. And I'll look to Ms. Nixon to guide us through that, if, if you may.
Yes, we do have members of the public who'd like to comment. Patrick Band, I am going to allow you to speak. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Great. Thank you very much. Can everybody hear me? Wonderful. Thank you very much. Patrick Band, Executive Director, Napa County Bicycle Coalition. I'll try to be quick. As many of you know, for over a decade, the Bicycle Coalition has been working to make riding a bicycle in Napa County safe, convenient, and accessible for all ages and abilities. Over the last number of years, we've also significantly expanded our work to focus on safe routes to schools and pedestrian safety hazards. We're really excited to see the city taking a proactive approach tonight by addressing potential safety issues for pedestrians and bicyclists on Spring and Madrona. As we know from numerous studies, the sense that it's unsafe to walk or bike is the largest single factor that keeps people from choosing active transportation options instead of a vehicle. We enthusiastically support the city's goals of increased walking and biking and safer streets. And I think we have a lot of opportunity to do that with this, with this agenda item. I did want to provide a little bit of background on the work the Bike Coalition has been doing for the last few years. Three and a half years ago, we partnered with the Napa County Office of Education and NVTA to lead a countywide safe routes to schools program. The Bicycle Coalition's role in that effort is to conduct a comprehensive walk audit analysis and develop active transportation action plans for every single school in the county, every public school in the county. Over that three years, we've also partnered with St. Helena P D and Parks and Recreation and other local residents in St. Helena to host walk and roll to school days, bike rodeos to teach kids bike safety education and, and other programs as needed. We're also really excited. Earlier this year, the city approved our proposed St. Helena Safe Streets Program, which although it's been a little bit slow to get going due to COVID, is looking at crosswalk and safety barriers primarily on Main Street. And also has significant public education components related to walking and biking through town. I also want to let council know that we still have a 2019 countywide bicycle plan that is yet to be adopted by council. And that has numerous improvements and recommendations in terms of plans and policies that will benefit not just bicyclists, but also pedestrians, particularly when it comes to speeding vehicles along corridors. I would also point the council to the existing pedestrian plan that was adopted, I believe, four years ago, developed in partnership with NVTA that identifies sidewalk gaps, ADA ramp issues, as well as those issues of crosswalks and speeding vehicles. Together, all those existing programs and policies and, and documents really provide a wealth of resources and direction for how we can make our streets safer, not just for, for bicyclists, but for all road users, including our kids. Major themes in each one of those plans is traffic calming. And that includes curb extensions, lane narrowing, bulbouts, the kinds of implementations that can be done fairly quickly, fairly inexpensively, and with comparatively little review. And it can also be done in a temporary or kind of quick build type model. Again, we really appreciate the city's desire to be responsive to safety concerns and believe that particularly on Spring and Madrona, there are those fast, inexpensive, effective treatments that can be applied to intersections, even absent just adding new paint for a crosswalk. For better or worse, studies have shown that just adding paint to a street really doesn't improve safety overall. And so we need additional traffic calming treatments to make sure that people, when they are getting into the roadway as a pedestrian, that they're able to cross the roadway safely. Last, to wrap up, MTC has just announced a new $50 million round of what they're calling Quick Strike Funding. Napa County's share of that funding is expected to be a little bit north of $1 million, with 25% of that funding required to go to bike and pedestrian projects with implementation happening within the next 12 to 18 months. That's a great potential source of funding to get out there, try some temporary solutions to slow down cars and increase safety of crossings.
Thank you, Mr. Band. We, we, we need to wrap up. Sorry.
You bet.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll, I'll stop there. Thank you.
Okay, we appreciate your comments. Very much appreciated. And the information about funding resources is, is welcome as well. And so we can circle back on that and connect on that. Thank you. Ms. Nixon, are we seeing additional public comment? Just want to remind folks of the, our four-minute timer here.
Yes, we do have additional public comment. The name I'm going to unmute is, is William Wagner. You should be able to speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, so I live on, I live at 1160 Hudson Avenue, South Hudson, just south of Spring Street. There are upwards of 20 elementary and middle school children in my neighborhood. And they all either walk or ride their bikes to school for the most part. And crossing Spring Street is a real problem. Well, my daughter's standing right next to me right now. She says hi. And just the other day, I walked my daughter to the corner of Spring and Hudson, and the cars are going like 60 miles an hour. And I do fully support a crosswalk, a stop sign, a traffic light, whatever, on Spring Street to get drivers to slow down. But I have to definitely piggyback on what Mr. Band was saying. As I grew up in Berkeley and I lived in San Francisco for many years, and both of those cities are really, really good at traffic calming procedures. And you can put a stop sign, you can put a crosswalk, and people are still going to speed. People are still going to hit pedestrians and bicyclists. But if you make Spring Street and Madrona, for that matter, a street that is not a thoroughfare, where it is actually physically inconvenient for people to use that as a thoroughfare, you're going to make that street safer. You're going to make it more friendly for children. You're going to make it more friendly for pedestrians, and that's really, really important. The other thing is, is that on Spring Street at Hudson Avenue, there's no sidewalk on the south side. There's no crosswalk. It is literally plain Frogger crossing the street at the corner of Hudson and Spring. And it is wicked dangerous and is not safe for anybody. I don't even like walking my dog there. So my point is, is yes, stop signs are important, crosswalks are important. But we need to somehow physically make Spring Street less of a freeway. Actively discourage people from driving down that street unless they live in the neighborhood. It should not be a shortcut. I know everybody comes up sofa, you know, comes up by zone wall and flies down. And that's how they get around Main Street. But it is not working for the people who work in the neighborhood. And that includes people speeding down my street, people going down Valley View. The whole neighborhood is a mess. And we have to literally physically discourage people from using it as a thoroughfare. That's, that's, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, we'll move forward here. Ms. Nixon, are there additional public comments?
Yes, give me one second. Okay, Lucy Johnov, I'm going to allow you to speak. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi.
Hello.
My name's Lucy Johnov. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. But it's my birthday, but this thing is way more important than my birthday right now because it's, Madrona at Kearney Street is unsafe. And I live on Kearney Street 1635. And on the corner, they're doing construction, and it's around that spot. There is no crosswalk. And I, I've almost actually got hit by a car, and I've needed to have to put out my hands before. And I think, I think I will need a stop sign or at least to have the right color of, of crosswalks. So if they have to stop by law, because it's unsafe for kids to cross. And I really, I, I know when I don't feel safe. And I know when I, I know I'm not an expert about this, but I know when I am in danger. And I have been trying to get a crosswalk for about a year because I sent a letter last year. And I think it's really important that we can get a crosswalk in that area. So people that are going to the R less or like me, when I go to the elementary, can stay safe, even if we're crossing over after COVID to see friends. We need to stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy. And this is Mayor Jeff here. And on behalf of myself and the council, we would like to wish you a happy birthday and for taking time away from your birthday to, to give us this very important message. And, and your willingness to come and speak publicly is very important as well. A young person, we want to encourage all our young people that this is their town and their forum to speak. And it's very much appreciated that you're here and putting these comments forward to the council. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great. And do so again, please.
Okay.
So, so we'll move now back to our public comment to see if there are additional comments.
Yes, there are additional public comment. Sophia Silimingra, you should be able to speak. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you very much. First of all, I would just like to commend you all. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council, for hearing me again on this. I'm going to abbreviate my comments that I, that I submitted because I think many of the comments have, you know, hit on many of the points that I was planning to make. And, you know, Ms. Smithies, I appreciate everything in the common sense that you are approaching this matter with. But I would like to go back to some of the comments that Mayor Ellsworth and Councilman Hardy have made here. And I would appreciate us to look at this through the lens of at least some common sense practices for the moment so that we can create a grander plan, if you will, for our city. But consider a few things. Spring and Madrona streets have become shortcuts for so many service vehicles and delivery trucks in the area, often at hazardous driving speeds. Therefore, making safety of pedestrians on these dangerous thoroughfares, making, making it a hazardous walk in the park with no safe route to cross. Also, since our last meeting, schools have reopened, and our kids are doing exactly what we've asked them to do. They're walking and biking to school. This serves not only a healthy form of exercise, but also supports the city of St. Helena's goal to reduce its carbon footprint. If our schools in our town do return to a stay-at-home order, as it may happen shortly here, cycling and walking still remains some of the safest forms of outdoor activity for all of our citizens. And finally, with the increased traffic on these streets, we cannot wait to have a tragedy, tragedy happen in our community to take action. We need to preemptively plan for the safety of our kids, the adults as well, and our furry friends. And so with this, I, I just ask you all to, let, let's take a look at a few common sense fixes that we can make right now and perhaps send for further study to create a larger plan for our city. But let, let's make a few common sense fixes that will hopefully help a little bit more than where we're at right now and provide a little bit more assurance for our parent, the parents in these neighborhoods, as well as all of the pedestrians in our neighborhoods to be able to enjoy our town and for our kids to get to school safely. I thank you all, and I appreciate all, appreciate you all. and for our kids to get to school safely. I thank you all, and I appreciate all, appreciate you all taking the time to listen to this topic again.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for being on. So I'm not seeing any additional hands. Priya, are you seeing any additional public comment?
Hold on one second. I am seeing additional public comment. Yes, hold on. Okay, Carlotta, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Carlotta Sinato with the Napa County Bicycle Coalition. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd just like to quickly highlight some of the points Patrick said earlier and mention a few additional points. So again, we are very supportive of City Council's proactive responsiveness to addressing the safety issues for pedestrians and bicyclists and the city's goals surrounding safe and increased active transportation. We definitely believe that there are several fast and effective treatments that can be implemented on Spring and Madrona corridors that can help improve the safety of these corridors and address the concerns raised by the public. We ask that before the council begins a new, larger planning process with the city that they review and approve existing active transportation plans, including the pedestrian plan and the 2019 bicycle plan, and consider the recommendations that will come from our Safe Routes to School Walk Audit Work and the Safe Streets Program. As a quick reminder, we are conducting pedestrian and bicyclist safety evaluations for areas up to a half mile around each of the public schools in the county, including St. Helena, for the walk audits. And we will be evaluating crosswalk safety at major intersections in the town through the Safe Streets Program. So with the Walk Audit Work, we'll be making safety recommendations for those areas around the schools. From our preliminary review of the Spring and Madrona corridors through our Safe Routes analysis, there is potential for several fast and effective treatments like bulbouts and high-visibility crosswalks that can improve pedestrian and bicyclist safety in the corridors, especially at existing crosswalks. It sounds like from the comments I've heard tonight that speeding is a real issue. And I think doing more than just painting, putting more paint out, but really looking at enhancing the existing crosswalks can make a big difference in slowing vehicles down and improving visibility of pedestrians. Our team is more than happy to continue conversations with the city and collaborate on future improvements for bicyclist and pedestrian safety in St. Helena. And just on a personal note, I would like to echo Lucy's comments from earlier. I grew up in St. Helena. I walked to the RLS Middle School every day from my house on Adam Street, and crossing Kearney is, or crossing Madrona at Kearney is definitely a challenge. Thank you for your time.
Carlotta, could you stay on for a moment for clarifying question?
Yes.
So in the work of the Bicycle Coalition, are you seeing a way to look at doing something on these two, two aspects on, on Madrona and, and Spring that would fit into the larger plan that you've been looking at?
Yes, I think so. We're looking at Madrona, especially in the context of RLS routes to school and St. Helena Elementary School routes to school. And Spring Street is more focused on the elementary school and I think the high school and the primary school. So we're looking at the larger corridors, both crosswalks and general pedestrian and bicyclist infrastructure.
And so then the ideas that you would have for these two specific areas could fit into a larger plan that you've already started mapping out to some degree?
Yes, I think so. We're looking at the half-mile radius around all the schools, and that in St. Helena, that really covers the main downtown St. Helena area. So this, our, our recommendations will be a cohesive, citywide resource.
Okay, very good. Thank you for being on tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, Priya, are we seeing any additional public comment?
I am looking, and I'm not seeing any additional public comment for this item. Thank you.
Okay, well, I will bring it back now then to the council. And I had a question. Well, I guess that sort of helps me answer the question. Are there any council comments or questions here now, where we are in the discussion at this point? I'm seeing Ms. Chateau.
Yes, just after hearing all of those comments, and I just wanted to also, if Lucy's still listening, say thank you for making that comment. It was very brave and wonderful of you to speak up with all of us adults, and I hope you do that again as well. I think you're a role model for other students in our community. But I wanted to say that after listening to the comments, it makes sense to me that we move forward on the improvements that we can do now on Spring and Madrona. And we approve the resolution that's before us that identifies funding to do that. And we do everything we can to increase safe, safe and increased active transportation on those two streets. I was thinking before that I would want to do the bigger safe routes to school, give staff direction for that. Having heard the comments, it sounds like we should hold off on that and instead review what we currently have and see what we need to do for a bigger plan. That's where I am right now.
And I'm seeing Mr. Hall.
I would, yeah, thank you. I completely agree with Councilmember Chateau's approach. In listening to the comments, all of which were terrific, and in reading a lot of the other public comment that was submitted earlier, you know, I think looking at a citywide plan is a great idea. It is something that is probably needed, along with all of the other layers that we're looking at already, right? From the underground work, from all the rest of the infrastructure. We should be considering sort of a block-by-block approach. What are we going to need to do with streets, with lighting, with sidewalks, et cetera? We keep coming back to this over and over. So my vote would be that we find funding immediately to address the pain points on Madrona and Spring. And I don't believe that a painted crosswalk is going to solve the speeding issue. There, there actually is a crosswalk at Kearney and Madrona. Nobody sees it. You know, you're just, you're just getting up to speed by that point. So something a little bit more hefty would work there and make that quite a bit more, more safe. But longer term, I think as we move into a planning phase as a city over the next couple of months, we should look at this as an additional layer to a citywide plan for some of these other improvements. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. Any additional from the council? Mr. Doring?
In all honesty, this discussion and the report, the staff report have left me more confused about what it is we're doing or what we're trying to achieve. I think Mr. Hardy made some very valuable comments that seem to have gotten lost in, in some of this discussion. If there are indeed quick, fast, inexpensive, common sense measures, and I'd like to hear about that now. But I am concerned that we, we not bypass a fundamental sort of a process here in terms of the engineering and going through that process, making sure we do it right. I've been involved in major litigation, so my lens is through the eyes of a lawyer, involving the issue of reliance upon different light, lighting, or crosswalks, or curvature of, of streets. And so we have to be safe here first. We have to make sure that what we do is engineered and that we are not creating reliance upon a pedestrian thinks it's going to be safe when indeed it is not safe. I actually, so, so if we want to focus in on those two streets, we're leaving out a bunch of other streets. So we're selecting, we're basically saying these are more important than others. Fundamentally, I don't know if that's the right way to do it. I'd rather have a comprehensive approach, frankly. But indeed, if there are some quick, easy measures that we can do for, frankly, $10,000, I don't know if that's going to get us very far. I'm worried about that. But I'd like to hear more from the engineer, the Public Works Director, on what kinds of things we can anticipate that would come from a study if the study sort of went in our direction and said, yes, we can do some of these things now, quickly, and inexpensively, because I don't think we can, but I'm not a, I'm not an engineer.
Thank you, Paul, Vice Mayor. Oops, sorry. Oh, wait, sorry.
Well, Erica, go ahead and I think respond to Mr. Doring, and then we'll circle back to Anna.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Doring. I just want to comment back that, you know, InterWest, I think the reason why they're also a little bit lower than the other two firms is that the fact that they did the speed survey for the city, so they're familiar with the, the traffic on both Madrona and Spring Street. They also did prior stop sign warrant analysis a couple of years ago on Madrona, when there was concerns about Spring, Mountain Road, and Madrona, and Allen, and putting in cross, and stop signs. The results of that study said that it shouldn't be done, but I think that's why their, their, their price may be lower. And then if they could collaborate with the Bike Coalition, who's done some of these walking audits and trying to promote, I mean, and highlight that we could get a good, robust, quick fix project. Now, lighted crosswalks are not the cheapest. You know, I believe it's at least $25,000 minimum, without even the, the curb ramp improvements that are needed, probably at those intersections. I'd have to review wherever the proposed crossings are, improved crossings. But that would be my, my first sense is that if we could collaborate with them, I go back that I've always encouraged to do a more robust because we have so many schools. And hearing the Bike Coalition and recalling that they are working on with the, the Safe Routes to School education and, and doing these improvements that, you know, is this a rush fix? Can we do something short with like narrowing lanes or increasing visibility by, if there already is a crossing on Madrona and Kearney, I believe there is, making those more vivid and reflective crossings, adding the, the shark teeth in advance of them, advance warnings? That, that is paint. But just trying to make more improvements, more up to today's standards as far as NVTCD that aren't around our city quite yet, the Continental Crosswalks, which are those big ladders, you know, that are bright and visible to oncoming traffic. And try to make those quick fixes in addition to maybe these studies, either the, the $10,000 study or the citywide study. Hope that helps.
I see Ms. Chateau and then Mr. Hardy.
Yes, and now I'm confused again because when I hear about those big blocks of color, that sounds great. So if that's not something that's in the study, I'm needing to understand that more. But I wanted to clarify what I meant before was that I'm in support of doing the study and working with the Bike Coalition because as I understand it, that's what we need to be able to do this the right way and safely. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Hardy, thank you.
Thank you. Well, a couple of things. First of all, if, if Ms. Smithies could just expand a little bit on what the scope of work for the $10,000 study is, as proposed.
It's focusing on the, the pedestrian cycling facility, safety, sidewalk gap closures, reviewing the existing conditions and collision history of each segment. They've done some of that on some of their prior studies already. Recommending placements of appropriate crosswalk, providing a technical memorandum. And I thought they were going to provide some such data estimates for, you know, the projects. I'm not seeing that in, in this report so much.
And, and that proposal covers both Madrona or lower Madrona and Spring Street?
Correct.
Thank you. Well, there are a couple of things that, that I don't want to add to discussion. Listening to Ms. Silimigras talk about commercial vehicles using Madrona and, you know, various commenters concerned about existing speeds on some of these corridors. It seems to me that if we're looking at things systematically, we have to recognize that pedestrian safety and bicycle safety and how these intersections function for cars, pedestrians, and bicycles really calls out, at least for me, the importance of our overall traffic circulation element. What we do and, and do not do in terms of providing for motor vehicle circulation has a big effect on driver behavior. The use of bypasses, for example. So I think at some point, once we start looking at installing measures that are intended and designed to change driver behavior, we're, we're really beginning to impact our circulation element. So a comprehensive look seems to me has got to take all of these functions into account, motor vehicles, pedestrians, and bicycles. So that's something I bring up because I do want to keep, I hope all of us keep that in mind as we look forward to more comprehensive work. I, I also made a note about some other comments. I think it was Patrick Band who mentioned an NVTA pedestrian plan. I think he said it was about four years old. I'm not sure what is in that. But it, in, in looking at doing some initial work, funding it now in the hopes of getting some things done sooner while we, you know, wait for the comprehensive plan and larger project to come into view, that the near-term, smaller projects, to the greatest extent possible, should be designed so that they can and will integrate, hopefully seamlessly, into the larger plan once we have it and we're implementing it. And so I want to be sure that our Public Works Director and our consultants, you know, have some of the existing design work in front of them when they're looking at these two corridors on a more focused scale. And, and the one thing that, well, we've heard two things referred to. One is the school safety analysis that is apparently underway as we speak. And the other is this four-year-old pedestrian plan. So I'm hoping that we, we get those into view and, and into this initial design process again so that what we do in the near term is likely to work well in the context of a more comprehensive approach. And if that's the mindset with which we go at it, then I think it does make sense to commit to a reasonably priced study to present us with some options for the Spring Street and Madrona corridors. And I think really it's not until we get a report back on what does or doesn't work and why, that, that we really know what sound options are. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, and I'm supportive of that as well. I'll just be very brief. I think having whatever we do dovetail into the larger comprehensive picture is important. I think we've got some real assets here in that we've worked with the Bicycle Coalition before. InterWest is also familiar with our town. And my thought is to support the idea of moving forward on a study of the, of the two in the, in the $10,000 range and, 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 but doing so with integration with the Bike, Bicycle Coalition and this consultant so that we see how whatever is, is presented, fits into the larger picture. And also looking at the legal issues and making sure we're talking about flow for every, everything. The part of the study, I, once we look at it, is also looking for that funding to implement those, those first two, those first two crossings. So having a study done and being ready to move forward those first two crossings. So having a study done and being ready to move forward. So we're sort of dual tracking. The idea that we're moving forward with a study, but at the same time looking for the funding. So when, when that study is, is there, we've also been looking for funding that can dovetail in to, to make that happen. So I think unless I'm seeing any objection, we're sort of there in terms of supporting a resolution on the, the, the $10,000 movement on looking at Spring and Madrona and then also making sure that dovetails in with the larger comprehensive picture that will, will get a little more clarity as we move forward after these initial conversations with Interwest Bicycle Coalition and our staff. Am I capturing that in a way that's acceptable to the group? Mr. Doring?
Just one question for staff. So if we go with this this $10,000 contract with Interwest, will it be relatively easy to sort of transition from that initial analysis to a broader analysis? In other words, are, are we able to use that data? Because I noticed here they're not really interested in doing a county, excuse me, a citywide active transportation plan. And I just want to make sure that we use our, our monies, our funds efficiently. So that there's a transition from this more targeted focus, these two streets. And that we're able to use that data and that, and that analysis to a more, a broader, more expensive analysis. And I'm not sure that, have we thought about potentially using GHD for a little bit more money, but then transitioning to a larger sort of a comprehensive approach? Would it be more effective, more efficient monetarily to do it that way? Or would it be maybe, maybe it would not make a difference to use Interwest and then find a completely different consultant? I'm just throwing it out there. I don't have an answer, but I just want to make sure we use our money well.
100%. I mean, unless someone else wanted to speak on that. I, I it's, I think any information they could gather from the, this preliminary one, you could build on it. I mean, if I was a private consultant, I would take that data and bring it on, you know, it's, it's already there. Why reinvent the wheel? The, the GHD, you know, going back to the pedestrian plan, it's already been adopted by council. It, it focused on Main Street because we know we have a high accident collision. You know, we had a major section of sidewalk on Henn Avenue. Those were the segments of the, the city that that plan on a 10,000 foot elevation focused on those high corridor areas. Whereas the citywide, I think we're getting a good bargain from GHD would get Madrona, would get Spring Street, we get all our side residential feeder streets and collectors and, and even these other areas and give us a plan that gives us these builds on what we already have in front of us in their 2016 plan that we're starting to knock off projects with and add those other new projects to the list. So we can start making dense and, and the other concerns such as Spring Street and Madrona and building and actually getting out there and putting these projects out to bid through Measure T funds in the near future or future TDA grant funding that's coming up for solicitation for call for projects later this spring. So I, your answer, I would recommend the, the, the citywide. But, um, but, or, or, but they would still build on whatever we're having. And maybe we could knock that price down if, if Interwest does this work and we could negotiate the price down later with, with the bigger project.
Guess what I'm suggesting is a two-phase project where they're focusing on the two streets. Right. Then they're transitioning to a larger scope so that we can address these more immediate needs. And I don't know if that works out well with consultants or that just creates more of a hassle and difficulty and, you know, on their part. I just want to be able to use all the data. I just think that I'm really concerned that $10,000 is not going to get us a whole lot of study. And I'd rather have the idea of focusing in on the two streets, but then transitioning to sort of a phase two broader study. But I'm open to either one. Frankly, I'm not gonna, you know, I'll go along with this. Just want to use our money well.
I think that's, Mr. Hall?
Thank you. So Erica, when, when they're done with the study on these two streets, there are specific deliverables in that request that you've, you've made of them. The, the data I think we're looking for are things like the amount of traffic that's, that's running through there every single day, certain times a day when it's busier, when school is in session, when it isn't, what's the accident history? This data, right? All of that can be used in any further study at any point in time. This group, we really can't make any decision actually about what we're going to do at Madrona and Spring until we actually have a study done there. So let's keep it as tightly focused as possible. Keep the deliverables clear. Come back to this group as soon as we have studied data that would include estimates for their specific recommendations to improve Madrona and Spring. Those recommendations might be a quarter million dollars and we may to say, we may decide, screw it. We, we're going to figure out something else. Let's do, let's look at this citywide right now. Or whatever we're going to come up with, right? So it's sort of a, we, we can't really get into the, the second phase here without seeing what are the recommendations? What's the timing? What's the cost? On fixing the current pain point, which is Madrona and Spring.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. I, I'm seeing Lester. Did you have a comment?
Well, yes, I'm, I'm I'm interested in Vice Mayor Doring's concept of maybe breaking the GHD work into two phases so that we have something sooner rather than later on Spring and Madrona, but have the benefit of working with a single consultant for, on a citywide basis for these issues. And I, I do think although one will never know that there's some efficiency there. And for sure it avoids the not designed in our shop problem, which you know, can be a factor sometimes when taking the work of, of one consultant and, and asking another somehow to incorporate it into their work. So the one concern I have about shifting our approach a little bit in that direction is that it doesn't present us with a, you know, a final action to take tonight. And in fact, it seems to me that's a, a direction to staff to request, if, if we do this, a modified proposal that would then come back to the council. And I'm mindful of the fact that we're in that sort of dead zone between Thanksgiving and, and New Year's Day when not a whole lot of new things really gets done. But and I, I, I'm mindful of the potential for delay in getting started. But I, I would be happy to entertain the idea that if we get a proposal so modified back that we have a quick special meeting to take it up and see if we can move the ball forward. So I like that idea and that's what I wanted to say.
Well, I think, I think that that was well said. Also, Mr. Hall, I think I was going to ask, you know, if, if in terms of resonating with this idea of a comprehensive look. And the idea of working with one consultant on two phases. So we get some efficiency and you're not doing a handoff where there may be some, some disconnects. So that would be if we were to think about moving something forward that looked like talking to GHD about a two-phase project to come back, to be looked at as quickly as possible, to make a determination that we could move forward on something focusing on those two streets, but also that, that, that really ties into an overall look. Is there, are we feeling like there's getting to be support in terms of looking at it that way with one consultant, two phases? Any thoughts if we're ready to, to maybe push something forward in that direction?
I'm supportive of that.
Just a question for our legal counsel. Do we, could we just give authority to the Public Works Director to negotiate the phase one price, you know, and not to exceed and then hold off on the phase two? Without having to come back to us necessarily and weren't
You could do, you could do that.
A whole lot of money right there. I mean, we can say not to exceed whatever number we come up with. I guess that number that's there. I'd like to drive it down if we can. Sorry.
If we had a not to exceed number, Mr. Doring, are you, are you comfortable with the current number of 10? Or would, would that have some flexibility? What, what would be your thought?
I would just give authority to the, the Public Works Director to, to negotiate.
Okay.
To drive the $19,000 down to whatever she could and still get the same scope of work done.
So, so in terms of direction, I see Mr. Hall, are you? Did you have a?
I, I was just, I was trying to keep it simple, I guess. I was just wondering. Erica, Interwest is already familiar with us?
All three firms are familiar with us, but Interwest did, did the state survey recently, but GHD is, is actually on board to do the crosswalk improvements on Main Street and Pope Street. They've done the the crosswalk analysis, which we'll be bringing back probably with the, the Main Street improvements that we're under grant funds with. So the, all, all three of them are, are first in the city.
Yeah, okay. Then back to Vice Mayor Doring's comments. I, and Lester, your comments about maybe splitting this up into a two-phase thing. Again, I would, I would look to Erica to figure out how to best orchestrate that. I like the idea of having a not to exceed on phase one. I think the concern of having the, the same contractor do both pieces, of course, is that they learn a lot about us and they learn how to stick it to us in phase two because they know it's going to be a much bigger job, right? So it sounds like they're already familiar with us. So that sounds good. If, if there's a good working relationship there with all three of these, then I have less of a concern with that. I, I guess I don't want to lose Lucy's voice here. She's really the issue. This was a very specific request that came from folks who are embedded in very specific neighborhoods where they see this happen, you know, this risky behavior day in and day out. So whatever you do, Erica, in this assignment, it, it can't be protracted in time. It's got to be short and quick. And at least in terms of phase one, this would be what I would recommend anyway. It's up to the council to decide, but the quicker we can provide relief on Madrona and Spring, I think is, is goal number one. Goal number two, of course, is to figure out what's the broader plan and how's it tie into everything else we have going on citywide, which I think is itself a very valuable exercise and is needed. But let's look at the, the first pain point first.
Very good. So I, I sense we have direction. Is there anything, Ms. Smithies or Mr. Presswich, that you see that we're missing in terms of direction for you to move forward?
Yes, I would recommend that we adjust the number in the resolution. The resolution is attached for an appropriation. So to provide flexibility for our negotiations, I would recommend an adjustment to 20 or 25,000. What I need to confirm briefly with our finance director is I believe that we have adequate funds if you were to move all the way to 25 in the gas tax appropriation as the resolution's written.
Why would we go, why would we go up to 25? We should be going down.
Well, if we were negotiating an entire package.
Well, I wasn't suggesting that. I was just suggesting phase one and then leave the phase two for a later date. Just phase one here.
Yeah. So, so I, I like that too, Paul. I, I think Mark, if we can, and Erica, if we can just structure the deal. So phase two is open-ended. We're just basically saying we want phase one to meet this not to exceed limit. And these are the deliverables. Included in the deliverables, of course, is, is strict timing. You want it turned around ASAP. And then phase two, they get to do that simply by getting phase one done for us.
This, does that give you the tools that you believe you need? Erica and Mark?
I don't know if he's looking at me or not, Mark, but I'm just, I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about taking the, their 20 grand proposal down to 10 grand, but with the caveat that you know, my negotiating approach would be, we want to do this ultimate plan, but we want to focus on Spring and Madrona first. And if you look at their, their full plan, it, it talks about public workshops. Well, I think we have enough public comment from our ATSC meeting from last October. The public comments from this night to this evening to say, hey, here's our public workshop for, for now. Can you, can you work from that and, and get out on Madrona and Spring Street and see what improvements we can make right now? And then we focus on the next steps after that. Is that, is that kind of summing up for everyone?
I think that's where we want to head is, is making that a priority. It would, you know, dovetail into their next stage. But I think what Mr. Doring is saying is if we're, if we're committing 10,000 to Interwest, that's what we would want to commit to, to GHD on this first phase.
Okay.
To see if they can work with that. And, and I, but I'm sensing that you think they're, they're, I'm seeing Mr. Hardy.
And by the way, by the way, just to correct that, I'm, I'm willing to give the Public Works Director authority, negotiated authority to try to drive it down as close to 10 as possible, but I'd be okay with the current amount for phase one. You know?
Mr. Hardy?
I, I wanted to clarify sort of what, what my thinking is and, and it, it may may not fit with what everyone else is thinking, but since we have a proposal for a complete active transportation plan from GHD in front of us, I think that totals $40,000. What I had in mind was asking them to come back with that proposal separating a phase one task for Madrone and Spring and phase two would be the rest. And so that we'd be in a position where we had a proposal that gave us a dollar figure for the total phase one and phase two, but we're in a position where we can authorize and approve expenditure of funds for phase one initially and then without obligating ourselves to do the whole thing. That, that would be, if, if it's feasible, it would seem to me to be the finesse approach here. Since otherwise, if we separate them all together, we never see the total cost.
And so by, by breaking into the two and giving it to them to show us how they would structure that, is that the suggestion? Letting, letting GHD show us how they would?
Well, we, we, we get a proposal back that shows us what they would charge to do just phase one. And it also shows us then with things separated and the work organized differently, how that impacts total. And, and we contract with authorization to proceed on phase one. We already know what the price is going to be if we authorize phase two. So I, I think the advantage there is we start off with better information cost-wise about where we're going. And
Does, Erica, does that give you a dialogue with GHD that to, to, to see where that may go? Does that give you something to work with?
I, I think so. If they're looking, if they're looking at the entire plan, but they can focus in on this and provide me a proposal to start here, but we still want this overall, that, that is a good plan. I mean, that's kind of what I was trying to get at, but I wasn't sure if that 10 grand was going to fit the amount that we're providing. I mean, it all depends on what they're going to provide us to negotiate, which I'll probably be texting them or emailing them after this evening, evening meeting to get some discussion dialogue going tomorrow morning, first thing.
Are we comfortable as a council? I, I feel comfortable with that. I just want to check and see the, where everybody is, if, if we have a consensus to move on this.
I'm fine with the approach that's been articulated by Councilmember Hardy.
Okay. So, so Mayor, I, I would recommend that you Okay, so so Mayor, I I would recommend that you that you do this through a motion and actually have a vote. I think it sounds to me like Councilmember Hardy has a good idea kind of what conceptually he's thinking of, so it might be appropriate for him to make the motion.
Mr. Hardy, are you prepared to do so?
I am. Thank you. So I move that the council direct the Public Works Director to request modified proposal from GHD. It would be a proposal for the entire active transportation network modified to separate the work into two phases with phase one focusing on pedestrian safety improvements to the Madrona and Spring Street corridors. And included in that motion is authorization for Erica to proceed to engage on phase one if the proposal comes back with phase one at no more than and here I'm struggling for the amount, but I'm going to say $25,000. And if the motion gets modified, then we'll we'll just work it out that way.
And are we seeing a second?
I'll second that motion. Councilmember Hardy?
Are you comfortable with that, Eric? Councilmember Hall? You look like you wanted to speak, and I didn't want to. We didn't want to cut you off.
No, I think we can continue going around. I just was thinking of Councilmember Shoto's original comment about speed.
Yep.
And I know when we look citywide, that's an involved process. It's, you know, it should include our own understanding of growth rates in different neighborhoods or new development or no new development or whatever it happens to be. And how we get through all that, I I'm not sure if we have that data readily accessible, terrific. I just think, you know, if we need some lights in a way of slowing down the cars on Madrona, it's probably something that could be installed within six months versus a study that might take at least that much time to complete citywide, maybe maybe substantially more, I'm not sure. So nevertheless, this being my first council meeting, I am going to vote in favor of Councilmember Hardy's motion.
Well, you're going to be.
Councilmember Hardy?
So I think we're just still trying to figure out, we have a second. And then the comments by Mr. Hall, I just wanted to apologize if I didn't recognize when you I do concur in terms of expediting and the concept of traffic calming, you know, not just simply a crosswalk, but traffic calming, looking at speeds. But I do believe with the 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 drive here to to expedite this, I think that needs to be clear in the in the direction, so.
Thank you. Me too.
Councilmember Hardy, did your motion also include to amend the resolution to to increase the amount to not to exceed 25,000?
What does the resolution say? I don't have it on my screen.
The resolution is approving 10,000.
Yes, yes, that that is part of my motion. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so Councilmember Hardy?
Yes.
Chuteau?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring?
No, I'm not comfortable with the 25,000, frankly, but I think, well, I mean, it says 19,974.
So we start it there?
Paul, what do you recommend?
Councilmember Hardy, you're muted.
Yes, I would entertain an amendment to the motion to set the cap at 20.
Yeah, I'll amend that.
Okay, then then.
The 20,000.
I'm good with that.
We have to start again, I think.
I am. That's what I'm thinking, too.
You you do. You need to or you need to confirm with the maker of the second that that they also agree to that friendly amendment.
I agree to that.
And then and then Cindy, you should restart the vote.
Okay, Councilmember Hardy?
Yes.
Chuteau?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes, thank you.
Mayor Eldred.
Yes. Very good. Thank you. Excellent work moving through that. So now I want to just check in with our city clerk here. Are we moving now to 9.1 and and 9.2? Okay, so that's where we'll start now. We are at 9.1. This is discussion of and direction on the potential activities and projects for inclusion in the 2021 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, applications. And this is prepared by April Mits, our finance director.
You're muted, April.
April, can you hear me? April, we can't hear you.
Hold up your phone.
Oh.
Maybe if you hold up your phone, April.
The workaround will be to call in, so we'll make a phone call real quick.
So we're just going to get a call in, just to let folks know who are on the on the meeting here. Our finance director is calling in.
April, you may want to leave the meeting and rejoin the meeting.
Okay, can you hear me now? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, okay, just for some reason my headset stopped working, so. Okay, so we I do have a PowerPoint for this, and I believe either Cindy or Priya is going to be pulling it up. Okay, so as the mayor had read, this is a discussion and direction on potential activities and projects for inclusion in the 2021 Community Development Block Block Grant Application or CDBG. And I apologize in advance, there are a lot of, there's a lot of acronyms. So I want to try to explain it at least the first time I mention it. Next slide. So the CDBG program is run through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. So what they do for this particular program is annually a Notice of Funding Availability, or a NOFA, is released. The NOFA does include general grant parameters for each category. The city is required to conduct public outreach regarding projects and or activities that could be considered. And part of the outreach does include a public hearing. And so this is the first step in that, why we have it in our public hearing tonight. The 2021 NOFA will be released sometime in January. And so what the staff wanted to do is proactively seek input for potential projects for the 2021 NOFA cycle. But we are using the 2020 NOFA guidelines because we don't anticipate much will change, and it will give us an idea of where what projects we could potentially apply for. The next slide. The grant guidelines, again, based on the 2020 NOFA, is that the city or any other entity or county can apply for a maximum of six applications. There is one project or program per application. The total funding per entity will not exceed $3.5 million, and the total state allocation is $60 million. The maximum per application of 3.5 million does not include economic development over the counter or over OTC applications. And it is estimated there'll be a maximum limit of 12.6 million in OTC. And OTC is reviewed on a first come, first served basis. The next slide. The criteria for all of the CDBG grants is that the project or the activity must meet at least one or more of the three national objectives. So when we are reviewing prospective projects and or there's any ideas that that are brought forth to us, we do have to keep in mind that they do have to meet at least one of these three objectives. The first is to benefit low and moderate income persons. And typically, the CDBG grant applications, this is where they see most of the applications come in, is for this first category. Or it can be the prevention or elimination of slums and blight, or meeting an urgent community need which poses an immediate threat to the health and welfare of the community. And what is considered an immediate threat to the health and welfare of the community is established by the state. The next slide. So again, the criteria are based on the 2020 NOFA. So in addition to meeting one of at least one of the national objectives, the project and activity must fall under one of the categories that's below. The maximum grant awarded is listed on the right-hand side per category. So it either has to be a public improvement, a public facility, a project pre-development, public service, planning and technical assistance, housing assistance activities, business assistance, or micro enterprise assistance. Next slide. So for the discussion before the city council today is the staff has identified three potential projects, and we are seeking council feedback on each of the projects that we've identified, as well as provide direction on any other project or activities to potentially include in the 2021 application. It is important to note that two of the three projects that we are bringing forth tonight were applied for in 2021. However, it's unlikely that the city will receive these funds. We have not received an official denial notice yet for these two projects. However, 23 million in totality was available. And as of July 2020, 74 million in applications had been received. And so those ones are reviews on a first come, first served basis. And the 74 million was was literally received within a short timeframe from when the grant applications were open. So that's why we want to bring those back to city councils, potential projects, because the legwork has been done on those projects already, as well as we have the applications ready. So as soon as the grant applications are ready to be accepted, we can submit them immediately. The next slide. These are the three identified projects that we currently have. The first is the multifamily, single-family housing acquisition or rehabilitation. The key aspects of this project, it is in collaboration with our town, St. Helena, and they would be the one actually running the project. The funds would be used to acquire an existing four-unit rental property. If acquired, there will be a 55-year deed restriction for low and moderate income on this property. And the use of the CDBG funds would be to purchase the property and cover administrative costs of the purchase. The grant amount would be 1.4 million for the purchase price, 100,000 in administrative fees to facilitate the purchase for $1.5 million total in grant funding. The second is the Hunts Grove Parking Lot Project for Hunts Grove Apartments. The key aspects are the apartments were built on city property, and they were built in 1991. The project will expand and improve parking on site, and it would add an additional 12 parking spaces or additional spots for 12 cars. And the grant amount is estimated to be 200,000. The third is a planning technical assistance grant. What this can be used for is include studies and plans for housing, public works, and community facilities. We did we did complete a study that was funded by CDBG in 2015, which is a feasibility analysis and comparison of sites for new affordable housing development. So funds could potentially be used to update that study, or there might be other ideas for other planning technical assistance studies out there. The 2015 study, we did expend about $45,000. Next slide. So the discussion and direction tonight is to look at the identified projects, the three projects that we just discussed. Also, take into consideration any other potential projects or activities the council might have ideas on. And then the next steps following this meeting is that we bring final projects and activities will be brought back to city council for approval once the 2020 21 NOFA is released. So I'd be happy to answer any questions as well as refer to some of my other colleagues that might have more experience with a particular potential grant activities and or the nuances of this CDBG program. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are we seeing any initial counts, comments, or questions? I'm still on this side view here of the, so I'm scrolling down. And am I seeing any questions or comments from council? Any initial thoughts? I'm seeing Vice Mayor Doring.
Thank you. With respect to the planning and technical assistance application or that process, I I don't know what the scope of the prior grant was, but if it was limited to private properties, an evaluation of private properties, or I I'm not exactly sure what it was, but I'm wondering if we could focus that request onto an evaluation of public properties that the city owns for sort of planning or feasibility, those kinds of things. So I don't know. It's hard for me to to ask the question because I don't really know what the the prior grant was, what the focus was. But could we change the focus or when we're updating, could we move in a more direct measure to public properties that the city owns?
April, I don't know if you want me to join it, join in the conversation at this point, but I think the common denominator is, as April had stated, is that, you know, the the key thing is we want to make sure that whatever study we undertake, it serves low-income people. So I think whether it's private or public, I think that's something that we can definitely keep open to consideration. And this is exactly the kind of feedback that's really helpful to us as we kind of gather and refine some possible ideas that can launch forward to apply for the the money that's out there.
Other council thoughts or comments at this point? I'm seeing Ms. Chuteau.
I did. I had another idea that I wanted to put forward. I talked with Mandy a little bit about it today. But I've been involved with First Five and on a mental health team because we've seen that there were already increased mental health issues. And with COVID, it's just now even more that way. And First Five focuses on, we were doing a pilot program that was focusing on providing free, you know, some some healthcare, mental healthcare services to caregivers and parents of very young kids from zero to five. And so when this came up, I thought, is there a way that we could focus on working with First Five and also Up Valley Family Centers, their executive director is a part of First Five as well, and do something so that we actually can help our community, our low-income community, with mental health challenges if there is a program there? So it needs to be developed more, and I'm just asking if there is support for it that Mandy can, we can give staff the direction to look into it, if there's council interest in it.
I certainly would be supportive of that, just just so that's out there. I think that that's an excellent thing to look into, particularly is what we're, we all know folks are dealing with these days. So I'd be supportive of that. Do we have any additional comments from council? I have a few comments on these these proposed grants.
Well, I think it's important to get an answer to that question. I think the nearest one I can think of that is the category would be the public service category. Would it fall within that category, staff?
Yes.
Or any other? I'm sorry. Sorry, go ahead.
Yes, it would fall within the category of public services, as long as it's meeting needs for low-to-moderate income individuals.
Any additional comments? Any additional comments, Mr. Hall, Mr. Hardy?
Yes, and I'm going to start off with a question. As the slide deck was going through, I thought I saw a description of a category that covered emergency needs of some kind. Could we revisit that subject?
That actually doesn't most, for the most part, doesn't qualify. C D B G needs to categorize an emergent, an urgent need in order for us to be able to use that as one of the criteria, and they have yet to do so. Even COVID didn't trigger the urgent need.
I see. So so on a case by case basis, one has to apply and they decide whether or not it's urgent enough? We don't have any guidance on how that works?
That's correct. It's not actually on a case by case. They would actually grant an urgent need open to anybody to apply for it, but C D B G needs to actually initiate that process. And we were hopeful that they would do it during COVID, but they actually did not. They still kept the low to moderate income requirement or slums or blights.
Got it. Okay. Well, that clarifies that. That's very helpful. Thank you. So then thinking about the twenty fifteen study and Vice Mayor Doring's comments. I think applying for funding for an update to that makes a lot of sense. And then I would suggest we should make sure that it includes both publicly owned property and privately owned property where development, low and moderate income housing is feasible or could be feasible. I, I like the idea of the proposal to fund acquisition of an existing apartment building that's in the staff report. But it also raises a question for me, which is, you know, if we have a choice between you know, spending one point five million dollars on an existing developed site versus spending the same amount of money on a larger, one would hope, undeveloped site. Now, how do, how do we get the biggest bang for our buck in terms of what we can facilitate over time in low and moderate income housing? And I don't have any particular ideas about that. It just, looking at that proposal called that question for me. Are we better off when we can investing in existing units or, or trying to leverage a larger number of new? So that's just a question I'm throwing out for council consideration and those are my thoughts.
I think those are some excellent things to consider, Mr. Hall.
Thank you. Did April or Mandy, did you describe why the, the last two proposals haven't been approved? Do you know why?
It had to do with timing. When the NOFA was released on January twenty first, they opened up the application period on February fourteenth. Literally within the first fifteen minutes of the application period being opened, they received about twenty million more in what was available for the grants for that particular, you know, over the counter, or I guess first come, first served category. And we did not have our applications ready at that time. We weren't prepared. And so that's why we're trying to be prepared this time around.
Okay. And you think they're going to announce this next month again?
That is the expectation. We did receive, receive a notification via email about a week and a half ago saying that it is still the estimated timeframe at the end of January.
Okay. And then I'd like Lester your comments regarding our town, St. Helena, that proposal. And whether that's the best use for one point four million dollars in this issue of the size and the amount of the amount of affordable housing units we need in town. I'm wondering that proposal that I read showed that that four unit complex would be deed restricted for the next fifty five years. Is that something that's contingent on this NOFA or is that a separate issue? Does anybody know?
I am going to divert to Mary Stevenson with our town, St. Helena is in the audience. And I'm going to divert that question to her because that's the project that they've asked us to bring forward on their behalf.
And I see Mary with her hand up here. Priya can help us navigate her in.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Hi, Mary.
Hi, guys. Welcome to Greg and Lester and thank you, April, for including us in this proposal. It's, it's an interesting quandary of whether we should spend the money to get a big piece of land to build prop, to build on or to buy some existing housing. And one of the problems is, is that we can't get this kind of money to buy a piece of land. And we can't buy a piece of land for a million and a million four. But we can get this particular apartment building for a million four. It's got four units in it. It's in good shape. It also is a good deal because we, this is about three hundred and fifty thousand per unit. It's three seventy five if you put in the, the administration fees that we're putting in for the city, which is legal cost and our due diligence for our town. And the Turner Institute of Berkeley has shown that the cost to build a unit, an affordable housing unit is four hundred and eighty thousand. And that does not include land. And that's based on building a fifty unit complex that's, that low income tax credit project. And so for us to be able to have existing units that are in good shape for three fifty is a good deal. The other thing that I think is, is important about this is that is timing. It's very difficult for us to find potential sellers who are willing to wait for us to go through, dump through all the hoops that we have to jump through to get money to make this kind of purchase. And we really applaud Joe and Robin Orsini, who owned this apartment building and have been in, has an option with us since last July, no, excuse me, last March. And we just, we couldn't get this through last year and they were willing to extend their options for this year. And that is something that's very hard to come by because most times when something comes on the market, that even if you're paying market rate, which we'd be paying for this, you, you can't, you can't get that kind of lead time. Right now, there are two apartment buildings in St. Helena, apartment complexes that are in escrow. One is on Hunt Street, one is on Monte Vista. It's a six unit building for two million dollars. So that cost is three hundred thirty thousand per unit. And then on Spring Street, the one that got away from us is the Malot complex, which is eight units and that's in escrow at two point six and that's three twenty five. If we had our act together as a nonprofit organization and, and the city, we would be able to make these kind of offers on those properties as well. These are the only, go ahead.
Thank you, Mary. And thank you also to the Orsinis for, for their patience in trying to find a creative solution here and doing something that will benefit the community. I'm just curious if this project is a recipient of the C D B G, this block grant, does it require a deed restriction for fifty five years?
The you know, Greg, I don't know. I think pardon me? I'm sorry.
I've been called much, much worse. So anything, anything works.
Councilman Hall, I'm sorry about that. I, it does, the grant funds can only be used for projects that are supporting housing that's eighty percent or less of A M I. So it does require that, but the, but the deed restriction comes in when this, the money goes into the city's Affordable Housing Fund. And then we apply for that money and we have to have the deed restriction to get the money from the city.
Okay. And this was one of the projects that, that we sent last year. Is that correct? But our timing was, okay, thanks.
Yeah, but we didn't even start to put the application together till well after the, the beginning. I mean, it wasn't, we didn't realize this project was available until well after the February fourteenth application date. So what we want to do this time is we want to be in there at eight oh one on the day that the, it's open.
That's, that sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask a question of Councilmember Hall? Is it your, Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized? Sorry. Councilmember Hall, are you of the opinion that we should have a fifty five year deed if we are to allow this to go forward with an application? Or are you concerned about that being too long or, or inappropriate?
I wasn't sure what the context of your question was.
I guess the context of my question is the issue, it's actually not related to the specific. It is tied to the specific application, but it's a little bit broader context, which is Lester's comment originally about the need for affordable housing and the size of the development or the complex or however many units we need here in town. It's, it's probably, you know, it's quite a few. It's probably somewhere between a hundred and fifty or two hundred and fifty units at some point. So there's a, there's a business approach that I think our town, St. Helena is taking that I think is on the ground, hand to hand combat, which I like a lot. It's a very, very talented group of people and they're doing, they're, they're the only ones, I think right now who actually have something to show for their, their work. I think quite a bit of work has been done in the past with their consistently there day in and day out. What, what I'm wondering is if our city at some point down the road here is faced with a potential development for a hundred and fifty or two hundred affordable housing units, where do we put it? And how's that sit within the context of the rest of our, within the context of the rest of our community? My question is this. If we deed restrict every, every two to four unit building, we're going to have a hopscotch pattern of deed restricted parcels scattered throughout the town. And I don't know where those sit. It's probably just a handful today. It doesn't really matter that much today, but at some point that might be a potential development hurdle for the city in the future. That's all I'm wondering. We don't have any plans in front of us that propose one way or another. I'm just wondering about that. And if this was not a requirement, then, you know, is there a way to get this done for not only our town, St. Helena, the community and the Orsinis? Is there a way we can do it without the deed restriction? That's all I'm wondering.
Thank you. So I have a few comments and then I wanted to open it up to public comment. I see Ms. Orsini on, on. And I'll open it up in just a moment. Looking at the three projects, I think the point that it's, this is a built in terms of the apartment building already built. So it, coming into town would be less, certainly less friction, less time. We know that in, in fostering a full spectrum community that, that working towards affordable housing, working, the deed restriction is a, is a tool that can be used. And so, and it doesn't preclude us from looking for monies for other properties. I grasp what you're saying, Mr. Hall, in terms of overall design and plan. I do grasp that and I think that's a consideration, but I do also, you know, want to recognize the need for housing now and the need to keep an affordable level for, for a full spectrum community. So I think it's important to consider this and, and the idea that because we're applying for this grant doesn't preclude us from looking for other monies for other properties. And then on the parking structure, I think this is an issue that's, that's been pressing in that neighborhood, not just the Hunts Grove area, but also the Star Avenue area. So a pressure release there, I think, would be great. I, I'd like to see if there's a way to do more than twelve. I also think if we're looking at parking, being innovative with tying into some kind of electric vehicle charging, tying in with perhaps some type of a solar array on the top of a structure, something like that, so that we're as we're looking at, at parking, we're also looking at innovation and how we help sort of move forward as a community. So I'm certainly in support of that. Would like to see if there's a way to kind of expand that number and then look for some innovations in that. And then certainly on the planning aspect, I think that's, that's excellent, excellent to apply for. Those are just my thoughts at this point, and I do want to open it for any additional public comment. And then I'll come back to council. Priya, are you seeing any, any public comment?
Yeah. Robin Orsini, I'm gonna unmute you. You should be able to unmute yourself now.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, good. I'm speaking for my husband, Joe, as well. I just wanted to give you a little background here of why we're doing this. And that I really think this can be a model for other landlords who want to sell in the future. These grants come around yearly or more. We need to find more and more money like this. A few years ago, we were approached by a developer who gave us a very similar amount of money, just no appraisal. Here, I'll give you this amount of money. If you sell this property to me now. We thought about it and I said, you know, what's going to happen is the rents are going to go up. And that's what happens. That's likely what's going to be happening to these new sales just going on. We can't afford that. We need affordable housing. We keep saying it. So I said, well, okay, I need to sell my property for a certain amount. We've held on to this property for a very, very long time. We've improved it. We, we need to get a certain amount out that's fair according to an appraisal. And we need to keep affordable housing in our town. Because right now our rents are affordable. So we now insanely in our very odd kind of community in that we have little land in our, in our community for building. We, it takes years and years to build projects. And our town is doing that. They are building projects. They're trying it with the little money they have available to get land so that these long term projects can happen. So there, nobody's against building new projects. But we are in a situation of provide, those are all infill housing. I think we need to provide a model to other landlords to be able to sell our properties and keep or, or even make affordable housing. It's possible that a property that our town or some other nonprofit buys isn't at that time affordable, but that can be made affordable. You know, we just have to use, we have very little stock here. We have to start using what we've got and don't wait around, you know? Brinkley Court is what, it's another year or two. And we have very little rental properties here. So that's the idea. It's a win win, we think. Yes, it's only four units, but it is four units. So let's don't give those away to developers who want to raise our rents up. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. Are there any other public comments at this point on this item? Thank you for the comments. Are there any other public comments at this point on this item?
Um, I'm looking right now to see if there are any and I'm not seeing any at this time.
Thank you. I'll, I'll bring it back to council. I'll just make a comment before looking for other comments. That, that the concept of, of infill housing and, and land banking that we've moved on and, and sort of showing, showing some models of how this can, can happen. In my mind, this fits in with that and it's already built. So there's already some, some, uh, some benefits that way. And, you know, I grasp, I grasp the, the concept of overall long-term planning. But I think our residential neighborhoods are part of a long-term plan. And to find a way to keep them residential and affordable, you know, and, and keep this full spectrum community. There's, there's great weight in that. And, and also the idea that, yes, it's, it's four units, but it is four units and in the town our size, that does make a difference. So I'm seeing Ms. Chateau.
Yes. Um, what I wanted to say is that I think that the number one priority should be having something that's ready to go so that we get the money this time. And these three projects meet the criteria. So I understand if we can add something like you wanted the solar panels or something like that, great. But my number one goal would be making sure that we can apply and get the money this time. And I think that these three projects all were, are good additions if we do get it. I think for housing, Councilmember Hall, I like the idea of being able to do something bigger, possibly even Vice Mayor Doring, you talked about doing something on public land. All of that's important. And I think that we could look at that in the future for the next time, as soon as those comes, become available. But these three to me match a need that we have right now, and I love that they're ready to go.
Mr. Doring?
I agree with everything that Councilmember said. I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting time to nine thirty. Because our, our hard and fast is nine o'clock. So we need, we are required to make a motion if we go beyond nine o'clock, and I anticipate that we might.
I'll second that. Vice Mayor Doring.
So, uh, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Cindy.
Call, roll call. Yeah. Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring.
Yes.
Councilmember Chateau.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardy.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth.
Yes. So we're looking for a recommendation this evening, and I think, uh, Ms. Chateau, encapsulated that pretty well. Uh, how to, uh, is there consensus on that? I see Mr. Doring supported that. I'm certainly with that. Um, I think we can move forward, but I want, I'm seeing Ms. Chateau.
Just add in there also the direction that we move forward on the mental health concept. If that's something that can be explored in time or future. It's fine.
Okay, and I support that.
If there's support for that.
Any last comments on, 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 uh, on this?
Uh, yes. And I support the staff recommendations, but I, I want, there are a couple of things I think we need to keep in mind as we take action tonight, uh, looking forward. One, and here, uh, I'll, I'll welcome correction if I've got this wrong from staff, but I don't believe that this kind of, uh, housing acquisition, uh, which does preserve existing affordable housing stock, which needs to be one of our goals wherever we have the opportunity. I don't, I don't believe that, uh, qualifies at all towards our RENA numbers. So, you know, we, we have a need to, uh, you know, both in terms of a, a community need and also state mandate, uh, to find, uh, opportunities to construct new affordable units as well. And, uh, and I've had the opportunity i- in the last several months to, uh, spend some time as a volunteer at Brinkley Court. And one of the things that, that, that has done for me is it's given me a, a lot of quality time, with Larry Vermuelin out there on the site talking about, you know, how the project works and, and, and we've had some conversations about, uh, the economics of, of these infill projects and land cost is a, a real barrier here in St. Helena to, uh, finding things that work on this relatively small infill scale. The advantage of larger parcels when they become available is that, uh, you can end up with a reduced per unit cost for the whole project. And, and we're, we're already in a spot in terms of, uh, local cost of construction and land costs where, uh, I, I think, you know, it's increasingly challenging to find opportunities that work. So, I want, I'm hoping that everyone will, uh, keep in mind the importance of, of looking for, uh, opportunities for the city to, um, underwrite land cost on a larger scale. That's, that's why we have Hunts Grove. That was city property. Uh, and we're forever indebted to, um, David Garden for, uh, the contribution he made that, that made, uh, land contribution that made the Stonebridge, uh, project possible. And, uh, you know, we have not, uh, found any comparable opportunities in the nearly thirty years since. I'm, I'm hoping, uh, that we can, uh, in, in the near term. So, and, and then I did want to say one thing, uh, about the parking project out at Hunts Grove. For me, there's a, a larger concern, which is that if we're not very thoughtful about, um, project design, then w- w- we run the risk with affordable housing projects of creating a built-in formula for conflict, uh, with neighbors. And, and that's something, and, and that's, you know, that's really what's behind, uh, this particular project. It's a conflict in the neighborhood over, um, overflow parking, uh, you know, the, uh, parking needs for the residents of Hunts Grove exceed the spaces available. It's generated conflict and tension. I'm delighted that the city's, uh, moving forward, uh, to do something to address that. Uh, I think we just need, again, to be mindful, uh, of the realities of parking, you know, development standards, uh, you know, are, are, are numbers on paper that tend to come from, uh, studies that average a lot of things out on a large scale. That's how, uh, project planners and designers get educated about, you know, how to, um, generate, uh, development standards. But here, as with Hunts Grove, where we have concrete information about what's working and what isn't working, I think we need to take that into account moving forward. So I just wanted to add those additional thoughts to the mix while, again, uh, supporting the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, so it, it looks like we've got support. I just want to circle back to the initial hall, just if you have any, uh, last thoughts here before we move forward.
Uh, no, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, very good. So, uh, Mr. Presswich, uh, Dr. Mitz, do you feel that you have what you need to move forward?
Uh, just to comment on the parking, we did look at a variety of alternatives when we studied that about a year ago and there is an opportunity to add additional parking. We would re, need to, um, essentially draw that up, uh, measure its time consuming. Uh, and it would compromise the existing soccer field garden area, and there's a bit of a grove. So the easier project is this tandem twelve unit, twelve spaces that we've designed. Fairly affordable, could be a really attractive project for the state. Uh, if they're competing, if we're competing about, against a lot of other projects. So if you would, I would like to make sure we're clear on the, whether we're comfortable with the twelve, uh, or whether we should, um, consider alternatives and bring something back later.
I think we should go with what we've got, uh, if it's ready to go and the timing is right. I think we should just go with, in my opinion. I'm looking, seeing some nods here. So in my opinion, we just go with what's there because we think that's, that's fully baked.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, so if, uh, staff's got direction, then we're gonna move on. Uh, we're gonna move on to our next item, and that is going to be the, uh, item ten point one. That's discussion and update on the City of St. Helena Water Supply and Phase Two Water Emergency. And this is Ms. Smithy's, our Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor Ellsworth. Um, I wanted to start off and, and, oh, there we go, this presentation. I was gonna start off and just kinda do an overview of the report itself. There's been some kind of some concerns or con, um, clarify, need point of clarification. Under the discussion of the water projections update, this, the, the water source, the Bell Canyon Stonebridge Well Production City of Napa, is a screenshot that you see under the discussion portion, a screenshot in time as of available water supply through November thirtieth. Not that we're gonna use all this water or, 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 you know, treat nine hundred and twenty-one acre feet, all, basically all of Bell Canyon's water reservoir storage. But this is what we have in place or available to the city. At this time, um, there's a potential that the city could, um, increase requests from the City of Napa, initial two hundred acre feet of water, should we need it. We have, we started talking with the City of Napa back in April, May, when we realized we've had a water sheer shortage. And so we, we, we already talked to them and also realizing by May, we've almost reached our six hundred acre foot allotment. And by early June, we had reached six hundred and twenty-five acre feet of use of the city water supply and actually stopped pumping from Bothford Pump Station and, and using Bell Canyon and the Stonebridge Water Wells, um, up to the June thirtieth. So we didn't increase that unnecessary cost of twenty-five hundred acre feet, twenty-five hundred dollars per acre foot of City of Napa water. So, um, with that, we do have a PowerPoint that, um, uh, City Clerk Shapopolis is helping me with here. We wanted to provide a screenshot, um, can you scroll down to the next one? Of where we are to date this year. Um, it's, it's written down in the discussion area of, of where we were the last two years as far as currently. We are trending, um, and water produced slightly under or fifty acre feet under than a year ago, which is good news. Though we know we went through fires, um, earlier this year, and there was utilization of Bell Canyon. We're still working on trying to get those numbers from the state on how much they think they drafted, because we know they, they will charge the government for reimbursement of all the, the drops, which we're grateful for during the glass fire in LNU Complex. But we still don't have that information back from Cal Fire on how much water was, was utilized or if they can estimate that. But the total water produced, um, as of November thirtieth was nine hundred and twenty acre feet. Forty percent of that was from Lewa Strala, thirty percent from the City of Napa water, and almost thirty percent from the Stonebridge wells. For those who are not familiar, um, in two thousand and twelve, there was a safe, um, yield study, um, comprised of three, city, uh, city residents, um, and council member or mayor, former mayor, Alan Galbraith, to limit our, our overall use of Stonebridge wells up to four hundred and fifty acre feet. So, um, when we came up with the hundred and seventy-six remaining acre feet, um, from November thirtieth to now or through June thirtieth, it's a hundred and seventy-six acre feet, um, available to pump without exceeding that four hundred and fifty sustainable, um, use of the Stonebridge wells. We can go to the next slide. So here's a screenshot of the graph. Um, it shows the previous two years and how we're trending lower. Almost on par though with eighteen, nineteen as far as overall water produced by the city operations. Next slide, please. And then here's a combined, um, water produced usage since, uh, two thousand and eleven, twelve fiscal year. We are, we are, our water supply is based on a fiscal year. Even though we, we work on a calendar year as well, but for, for, you know, for budgeting reasons, we do a fiscal year. So eleven, twelve, um, you can see the trend has, it started going down. We had a drought starting about two thousand and ten going down. Started going back up again, usage or production. Um, these numbers do not take in count, um, water. No, this does the actual water produced, not the, the meter delivery. So you'll see the dip about fifteen, sixteen, then it goes back up to eighteen, nineteen. Then it cross, um, right now it dives right down to twenty, twenty-one, because it only had the screenshot of through November thirtieth water usage, though we're trying to maintain, you know, we know we're in a water crisis. We're in a phase two emergency. We don't yet have the numbers. Though we, we know we have a, uh, required reduction to sixty-five gallons per day per resident, per household, or per person per household. We also have a commercial reduction. We don't have those numbers yet because we need to send out public outreach. Earlier this evening on consent calendar, you approved a third-party assistance that will be utilizing to help us get those surveys to our residents and commercial users. So we'll have that additional data to see what will be our trend, you know, seven hundred and seventy acre feet through the end of the fiscal year is as if there was no change, no water emergency. So seven hundred acre feet, if, if we reduce it by ten percent, um, if it's a twenty percent reduction, um, based on, um, reductions by our residents, that's, that's the number we're still looking for. Um, right now, I'm just, we'd be throwing a, you know, a number on the wall until we have try to get that information back from the residents, um, on what our actual projections will be based on the phase two reductions. Next slide. Here is the actual water demand metered use. Um, and then the, 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 there's a, a line straight across, which is the safe yield number of nineteen fifty. The actual metered use, uh, we did not include the numbers on this. This is the actual water delivered through meters to customers. It's been trending below the safe yield supply since two thousand and nine, ten. This factors in at fifteen percent, uh, conservative water loss. Since this number was developed by the Safe Yield Committee, we've been continuing it, though we've started updating our, our annual fiscal year, starting back from about two thousand and twelve, thirteen, when the city staff, we had started to have a trend of turnover. We've been able to, to capture each fiscal year since then on what the water loss has varied from six percent loss due to water loss flushing. Just from production levels to our actual water metered levels. This is kind of that number we're still trying to float in between beneath the safe yield line of our overall water supply. So we're still trending below that. Next slide. And then Bell Canyon Historical Capacity in May, November and December, um, since two thousand and one. As you can see, um, two thousand and twenty, um, we're, our November capacity status of Bell Canyon is trending a lot higher than our earlier years. A big factor of that is prior to two thousand and eight, we did not have the City of Napa water online yet. So we we used our, but we relied heavily on Bell Canyon and our, our numbers dropped down, um, much lower than they do now. Even with our drought year of starting off in May capacity of, of less than seventy, um, or eighty percent. We've been able to conserve by ramping up the Stonebridge wells up to, to thirty percent capacity as well as, you know, using all Napa water first to try to conserve on our Bell Canyon. Another impact to, to a higher, um, capacity analysis of Bell Canyon at this point in time is COVID and the impacts of, of people not probably frequenting the city as much, as well as we had evacuations in, um, September. So the usage has, is just, we're trending higher thankfully at Bell Canyon. And that is the end of our slideshow on this. I, I'll put in the questions on it, but we, we're, we're somewhat healthier right now going out into the fiscal year, but our concern is making it through the next November. As I said before, we're gonna provide a better projection update in January. I'm working with our operations staff that's getting familiar with our, um, the spreadsheets used in the past to help develop these forecasted, um, projections. If we receive the same amount of rain, what will that look like going through next November? If we only get twenty inches of rain, I think that'd be a good starting point, being conservative on a drought and try to project if the demand stays up, we can't force people to reduce water, though fines is a good way. But, you know, if people do not react accordingly to the phase two emergency, we're gonna be in a world of hurt moving into next fall and, and having enough water and capacity to get us through the next demand year. So, um, we'll have an updated projection, hopefully have some realistic numbers of what, uh, reduced reduction by phase one and phase two mandates. Um, and have those numbers and projections back in, in January to council to provide a more better, and hopefully a clearer picture where we're going in the next year. I was just trying to provide a, a snapshot, um, of our available water supply through November thirtieth and then provide a more detailed projection, um, in January. Another thing, this is the first year, it seems like, since two thousand and fourteen. in January. Another thing, this is the first year, it seems like since 2014 that we're testing out the new safe yield supply. Prior to 2012, we, we just used our percentage status of Bell Canyon to establish our phase one emergencies or phase two emergencies. So we're still kind of the learning mode of, of how do we project out when we implement the 65 gallon per day per resident for, you know, per person per household as well as the customer status. And, and then we also on this report have discussed what we're doing for phase two regulations. We're out for solicitation of water advisory board. We've met several times as city staff internally to discuss the public outreach aspect. Public Works Operations have discussed the, with the state drinking water, we're having a monthly meeting. So we're on the same board moving forward on, on any needs we have. If, if we move into a phase three and need any water rationing. We're hopeful that we do get a substantial rainfall that we can maintain or at least get to a phase one status if not out of this emergency at all. But right now the, the forecasting for our water or rainfall is not great. But there's always hope for that miracle march. Again, that's happened in the past. Fiscal impact. If you have specific questions on that, I, you know, it's all written out in the, the section on here. Decreasing consumption will affect projects, prevent, also impact our wastewater rates. We already, as council's already authorized the 30,000 to assist with staffing and outreach. It's, it's a big workload to get this information out to the residents and other consumers within and without the city. As well as working with the fines that are being established, that have been established, as well as working with the water advisory board and the penalties moving forward. With that, I, I've completed my report.
Erica, isn't my understanding that we're reaching out to a, a, a water engineering expert consultant to help look at those rates and potential fines, et cetera, to, to work, to work with a, a firm, an engineering firm and how we determine those?
I'm going to defer to, I don't believe that's part of this report at this point in time. We're, we're looking forward to see what. I'm, I'm looking.
I can help respond to that question.
Thank you.
No problem. So yes, part of the 30,000 that was allocated earlier today is to actually look at a firm to, that has experience with rate studies, that has experience with fines and penalties to help come up and, and basically compare what has been done with other agencies and give us some type of recommendation on what types of penalties and how those penalties can be assessed. So that's something that we would, before assessing any penalties, we would need to have council determine what those penalties would be. So we'd be working with the, the subcommittee with, with city staff, with this outside consultant as well as the water advisory board and then ultimately the city council for approval of any type of penalty structure.
Okay. So bringing it back to council here, I'm seeing a comment question from Mr. Hall.
So Erica, what is the response from the City of Napa? You said you've been speaking with them since April or May?
We, we, we did. We asked about the 200 foot elevation if we needed it. They said use it. We were initially just concerned about going over. We knew we were, we were going to be over by the, the May billing. So we pulled throttle back on, on pumping from RPS, Rutherford Pump Station, excuse me, it's acronym of RPS. And, and it looks, turns out we've actually gone over a 600 acre foot in the past three fiscal years. And then prior to that, we, we were just being shy of 600 to educate for those who aren't aware, we have to pay for 600 acre feet regardless of whether we use it or not. So I'd rather us go a little above it than, than fall short every year and still pay the City of Napa such a high rate for that acre foot of water. So they have said, I have it in writing, but that was, you know, before the end of, you know, June, but that, that they would be willing to provide the 200 acre feet of water. And so we never have, we never have needed that draw, but.
Yeah. And so when you, you said that you have some more forecasting to do in terms of historic rainfall or last year versus this year or your projection for next year and where we might end up next summer?
Correct. Cause right now the number I showed forecasted, the 770 acre feet is just, if we follow the past three years of trending of meter delivery, you know, that's about 770 acre feet. So if we follow that, no one reduces their water consumption, which I don't think that's going to happen. People have been very diligent about reducing their water as, as well as we have COVID. But, you know, if, if the projections I wanted to bring back in January are what does it look like based on the phase two, but that's, that's a big job of analysis because you have so many different households with so many different, you know, resident, people per home, the commercial outlet, we can do a generic look, but it's just kind of, it's all approximate. It's all an estimate. Just trying to see, or we could just base it on a baseline of a 10% reduction or a 20% reduction by the community or, or rate users. The rate payers on what that looks like going into the next fiscal year so we can project out to next November. Cause that's part of the code is if we, if we're not going to be able to project our demand or meet our demand November by November of the following fiscal year. That's, that's where you trigger the phase three or the phase two. So we're on the cusp right now of the phase two, you know, no rainfall, but if we get zero rainfall, we'll definitely probably be in a phase three, but we.
So we got to figure out our rain dance.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm wondering, Mayor and maybe Lester, I'm not sure. I think one or maybe both of you are on a county groundwater board or advisory group?
Both Mr. Hardy and myself are on this advisory committee that is advising the County Groundwater Sustainability Agency, which is the Board of Supervisors. So we're on a, on a, a committee that is studying at this point, the situation and sort of gaining data to look at a comprehensive look at, at how groundwater is managed in Napa County.
I see. Okay. So that's not looking at redistributing water countywide. It's a ground, well, water specific.
But it, it, the groundwater sustainability agency is, is mandated by the state law, we know by its acronym, which is Sigma. I can't even tell you what that stands for. But it, it's, Sigma has very specific requirements for what needs to be in the groundwater sustainability plan that the Napa County Groundwater Sustainability Agency needs to produce and submit by the end of next year. So that, that that's focused on groundwater. But one of the things the state requires the agency and the plan to analyze is interaction between groundwater and surface water. And as soon as one gets into that subject, then really everything that's going on in the watershed becomes a factor in the analysis. So that, that's where, that's a particular part of the plan where I think we're going to have the closest thing to a systemic look at what's going on with water. But at the end of the day, the function of the plan is to manage groundwater extraction so that it doesn't cause undesirable effects. And, and I think, you know, with that inevitably, but, but not really as part of the mandate will come a conversation with other, well, principally with the municipalities that have reservoirs.
Right.
That's, that's really where you have to tie things together in terms of the surface water and the groundwater. So a lot of information is going to be gathered and, and some of that is going to be very relevant here in the City of San Elena, because as we've already heard, our municipal wells are a very important part of our water supply.
You bet. Thank you.
So I think that, that sums it up pretty well, the work of that committee. And, and there is a tie into San Elena and what we're doing through the connection of surface water to groundwater and also as we use groundwater. So it's a, it's a related conversation and it'll play into the larger, larger picture.
So that, that sounds like a great conversation. It sounds like it'll take, it's very complex, obviously. It'll take some time to review, I guess, and see what outcomes may come. But what are we doing as a city to actively procure more water right now, other than paying $2,500 an acre foot from the City of Napa? Do we have anybody out there who's selling wells?
I'm not sure if you're looking at me to answer that, but as.
Open ended question to whoever.
So there's a, there's a, there's a deep water conversation that, that's happening, that has to keep happening, particularly as we recognize that we have less of the resource. It makes it very apparent. When you have more of it, there's less impetus to, to have the conversation about how you manage this resource, particularly if it goes into a scarcity situation. So this is the, the dialogue now, citywide, countywide, statewide. What do we do? How do we look for resources and work together? One of the, one of the, you know, there've been benefits of COVID, not, not a lot, but there's a dialogue now with the municipalities in the county that's probably more established than it has in the past. And so working together on water issues as, as we work on other issues, we are connected to the county through, through our water resources. So the dialogue is here now, getting the data, and I, I believe that as Erica circles back with, with this next analysis over the next month, we'll get a better sense of where we are and where the discussions need to go with our, our other municipalities in the county, with the county and at the state level of where we, we get these resources.
Okay.
With all due respect, Mayor, we are going to need to focus on managing our time for this meeting.
Okay. So let's, let's move forward here. I see Cindy looking for a, a motion.
A motion to go beyond 9:30, please. I need a unanimous vote.
Can we get through our final item in 15 minutes if we call for 9:45?
I'll be really quick with it.
Okay.
All right. I'll make.
Can we get a motion? Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I appreciate it.
I'll make a motion to extend to 9:45.
I'll second it.
Councilor Shuto? Yeah. Hard, Hardy?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Very reluctantly, yes. We need to manage our time better than this. So just for the future.
Mayor Ellsworth.
Yes. So just to wrap up this item, so it's an informational item. I want to recognize that, yes, this is a concerning situation with the, the resource. We'll have data, more data soon. I believe the, that the working with a, a water engineering consultant is going to help us look at best methodology for managing this situation. So we'll look forward to the next report coming soon. So with that, then we'll move to the final item and.
Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but you, given that it's on the agenda, you do need to take public comment and I see, I do see a hand raised.
Okay. I apologize for that. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. So I'm seeing Mr. Galbraith on the line with a comment.
Thank you very much for listening to me. I think your discussion just vastly underestimates our water situation at the current moment. Fundamentally, the Napa water replaced Bell Canyon water. And the reason for that was that we were taking years ago excessive water from Bell Canyon in violation of our state permits. There's just no way not to get around that situation. There's also very much focus on our water draws from the Napa wells. They are in violation of the Napa County General Plan. They're the focus of Water Audit California. And, and I just don't see at the moment where the projections provided by the city give us any solace other than the fact that we are in a serious water situation. I also disagree completely with the idea that we don't have the data today to know where we are. We do. We just don't want to face up to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for the comments and we will be moving forward compiling through our Public Works Department and, and, and assessing where we are. So we'll be back with another report very soon. So with that, I'll close public comment. If I don't, I don't see any additional public comment. So we're going to, unless there's any final comments, we will move on to our final item.
Just one, just one, a very short comment there. I do think in, in January that we need to come to grips with what the former mayor has said and try to respond to some of the points he's made. I didn't have a chance to ask a lot of questions about a number of points in the staff report. The numbers are extremely confusing to me. I think there's some inaccuracies and some assumptions made based on maybe statements that are not quite accurate. So we should address that and take it seriously in our, in our January report. Thank you.
Yeah, I certainly concur. And at that point, be ready to move as quickly as we can. So I concur. It's a very serious issue that needs a very serious focus. So with that, I will move to the next item. This is item 11.5, and this is our city council assignments to various city and Napa County committees, boards and commissions. Our city clerk is going to run us through here. I see there's a little bit of public comment. I'm not quite sure how to take that or, or where that goes. I'll kind of let the city clerk guide us a little bit.
So annually, we review boards and committees. City council members serve as staff liaison, not staff, but city council liaison to our local boards and committees and also sit on various intergovernmental boards and committees. So I would just like to start with our local boards and committees and run through and see if you would like to affirm the current appointment or if you would like to assign someone new. So I'll start with the ATSC committee. Currently Vice Mayor Paul Doring is the council liaison. Would you like to affirm that position or would you like to appoint someone new?
You're comfortable with that, Mr. Doring?
Yep.
Okay. Looks like we have support on that.
Okay. Next would be.
By the way, and jump in if there's something that somebody really desperately wants, of course I would consider that. Thank you.
Next is a library board trustee. Currently council member Chuteau is the council liaison. Would you like to affirm or re, or appoint someone new? I would like to reaffirm.
And you certainly have my support on that.
All right. Last would be the Parks and Recreation Commission, and we need to appoint a new member.
Does one of our new council members find that of interest?
You're going to have to.
Lester, I'm fine jumping in there.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you.
Okay.
We'll move down to our, our.
We're going to go to intergovernmental. And per bylaws or policy, there are some, the mayor sits on some of the, the, the boards. And so I have highlighted in yellow on the chart what, what seats are going to be affirmed or new appointments. So first we'll go with the Monrovia. And Mayor Ellsworth automatically sits on the committee, but I would need a second council member. Right now we have Vice Mayor Doring serving on the committee. So I should affirm or appoint someone new?
Mr. Doring appears to affirm.
Well, myself only.
I support that as well.
Okay.
Next is ABAG, General Assembly, and currently the primary member is Vice Mayor Doring. And the alternate is council member, oh, that's open. So the alternate is now open for an appointment. Would you like to affirm or reappoint some, or appoint someone else for the primary position?
Mr. Doring?
Or leave Vice Mayor Doring?
I'm fine.
Okay.
It's good. So we'll need a alternate. I'll look to our, unless Anna. I'll look to our unless Anna's interested, I'm seeing Mr. Hall.
Great for Mr. Hall.
Okay.
Okay, next is the Napa Valley Tourism Corporation, and currently Councilmember Shuto is a primary member. Would you like to affirm or appoint someone new?
Are you happy there?
Does anybody else have an interest in this one?
If you want to switch with me on the on the A bag, I'm fine doing that.
Okay, sounds good.
You get up easy there, because I go to every meeting.
Okay. So everybody, everybody attends. League of California City thing. We have Napa County City Selection Committee. And the primary is the mayor, and I need an alternate. Right now it's Vice Mayor Doring to either affirm or appoint a new.
I'm sorry, which one is this?
This is for Napa County City Selection Committee. Napa County City Selection Committee.
I was also curious about this because it says the mayor, it must be the mayor, and I never, I had never gone to any meetings. And I didn't even know that I was an alternate. I I don't know who who has been the alternate.
I was alternate thirty years ago.
Okay. It just says it must be the mayor, the representative. It doesn't even say anything here. I don't know.
It it meets fairly rarely.
I'm happy to do it. I just didn't know that there actually is an alternate.
Okay, so I will leave you as alternate. Napa County Flood Control and Water Conservation District. The mayor is the primary and the alternate is Vice Mayor Doring. Would you like to affirm or? Point a new?
I'm fine. I was re- I'm going to reconsider my position as Vice Mayor. I'm fine.
Okay, Youth Opportunities Commission and Vice Mayor Doring is a primary member. I don't even think you've ever met.
No, we have.
So would you like? Okay, okay. Would you like to affirm the appointment or point a new? Okay. Everybody goes to Nick Log. Okay, next, Napa Valley Transportation Authority, MBTA. I've got primary as Mayor Ellsworth, Vice Mayor Doring, and alternate is Councilmember Shuto. Would you like to affirm the appointments or appoint a new?
I I'm certainly supportive of the current lineup. If everybody's amenable to that. Mr. Doring?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, next is Napa County Watershed Information Center and Conservancy, WIC. And primary is Mayor Ellsworth and alternate is council, well, alternate is open.
This is the watershed information.
You're the primary. Yeah, you're primary right now. Would you like to affirm or appoint a new?
Yes, certainly. I I would continue on that if there's support and and suggest potentially if Mr. Hardy's interested. Those are some of the water issues that tie into the the groundwater sustainability work. That would be my thought.
Councilman Hardy, would you like to be the alternate?
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
Next is Upper Valley Waste Management Authority. Currently, the primary would be open and the alternate is Mayor Ellsworth.
So so.
I would like to be the primary.
So on this one, the. Some public comment came in regarding myself on this council. Or on this committee, and so I want to respond just a little bit to that. I'll be brief, but. The response is that this is a board that that I sat on as an alternate, but I'm not actually seeking to be on this board anymore. You know, I believe my role as an individually elected official, not on the board, I'll have a a better opportunity to address some of the issues that came up. My concerns had to do with our current liaison system, bringing information back to the council and fairly substantial. Environmental and safety issues that came up. Over the last number of years, so. As I read the letter. That characterized certain things. I don't want to get too deeply into it, but there were some substantial issues. Regarding contamination of the Napa River and mishandling of radioactive material in Napa Valley, and I think it's a serious concern that needs to be. Continued focus of conversations when we move forward. But just in response to the letter, just so folks understand my. I'm not actually intent to to remain as an alternate on that board. So I just want to put that out there and. If there are any other folks who want to be participants in that to step forward.
I heard Anna wanted to be primary. I do. And I would need an alternate.
I volunteer.
And last is Napa County Regional Climate Action Committee. Currently, the primary members are Mayor Ellsworth and Councilmember Shoto. Would you like to affirm or appoint a new? I want to affirm.
That's a role I'd like to continue as well.
And with that, I conclude my staff report.
Very good. Okay, so we've got that all put together. We're at the end of the meeting. I think we worked through this well together. I appreciate everybody. We appreciate our two new members, Mr. Hardy, Mr. Hall. Our current members, Mr. Toe, Mr. Doring, our staff, our community. All the hard work this whole year. We're moving into the holiday season. It's been a challenging year. But I keep saying I think we can make this the most meaningful holiday ever. I'm seeing a a hand from Mr. Hardy. A thought before we.
Well, yes, I just wanted to check with staff to see if we need a motion on the appointments.
No motion is needed.
Oh, and I. Okay, very good. Did we open for public comment? Do we need public comment on that? Okay, so I'll open it for public comment and see if anybody checks in.
All right, I'm looking right now to see if there's any members in the public for public comment, and I'm not seeing any.
Okay, very good. So we'll close public comment. We'll bring it back. I'll say thank you again to everybody, wish everybody a. A very meaningful, happy holidays, and we'll keep working together through this COVID situation. We'll get to the other side. And we'll see you as we get to our next meetings in the new year. Thank you, everybody.
Merry Christmas. Be safe. Peace.
Bye.
Happy Hanukkah.
Yes, good night.